Okay. I'll call the meeting to order of the City Council. Welcome, everybody. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum. Will you all rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance? Bill, would you handle that?
Ready? I'll begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item is to approve our agenda. Are there any changes in the agenda? Hearing none. Okay. The agenda is approved. We have a presentation by the Ojai Music Festival. And Bravo. Jamie, come on up.
Hey. Bravo.
Good evening. This is... We started a little late on a full agenda. This will be, what, ten, fifteen minutes?
No, this will be a lot shorter.
What?
This will be a lot shorter than ten or fifteen minutes.
Oh, okay.
Bravo.
If it plays out, Jamie, I'm gonna put a credit on your credit card.
I value my life, and I don't want to be hit by a tennis ball or a pickleball, so...
Or a cannabis.
Or racket or paddle. Thank you very much. My name is Jamie Bennett. I'm the president and CEO of the Ojai Music Festival. Two years ago, I came with Laura Walters and made a... Walter and made a presentation. She made the presentation. I introduced her to the City Council. And Councilman Blatts, not the current Councilman Blatts, but the predecessor Blatts invited us to come back every year, and we saved you from seeing that. So last year, we gave you a rest. We're back again. He said, "Come back every year." That was a great presentation. I'm just warning you. And Councilman Francina was also not at the table at that time. So we're coming back to just sort of give you a quick update on where we stand with our Bravo program. And I think that most people in town, many people in town, know that the Ojai Music Festival is not just a four-day event. It is a year-round event that the festival puts on in the public schools. And in fact, Councilman Wyrick's mother was in charge of the Bravo program in the schools for many years. And that's what Laura's gonna tell you about. I'm gonna put in a quick commercial announcement. We're in the countdown to the Ojai Music Festival. It starts on June 6th. It runs for four days. It starts this year with an opera called "The Rake's Progress" by Stravinsky. It's been only performed in the West Coast twice in all the history of its being written and performed. Stravinsky was the first artistic director of the Ojai Music Festival and was so for a number of years, followed by Aaron Copeland, who was his student while he was the artistic director. But this year, we're starting with a full opera on the stage. We're bringing in forty-nine-piece orchestra from Amsterdam to perform it and a wonderful group of opera singers, young opera singers from all over the world. And we're gonna start there, and it ends with George Gershwin. So we're really running the gamut this year. It's an exciting festival. Tickets are selling strongly. I urge you, if you have, all of you at home as well, if you have an interest, buy your tickets now. The good seats will start selling out in the next week or so. And it's gonna be a great, great festival. Lots of fun. And with that, I will throw you to Laura, who runs the Bravo program, which is the Ojai Music Festival's work in the school system.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you for inviting us back. We're so excited that you wanted to know more about us. So you probably know the Bravo program is the only program where children receive weekly music education for TK, Transitional Kindergarten, Kindergarten, first, second, and third grade in the music, in the public school system. And it's all free to the schools. We do all the fundraising for that. Some of the other programs we have is the music van. We go around to ten different schools. More than four hundred children get to bow, bang, and blow on instruments and see what they want to try. We also have the Education Through Music program, which is the weekly K through three program that I teach myself. And something happened today that I thought you would appreciate hearing about because we're all about social skills, language, and these types of things. So we're playing a game where we run around a circle, and then when the children meet each other on the other side of the circle, they have to shake hands and take a minute and say, "Good morning," "Good afternoon," "Good evening," social skills. And Arlo, he takes his turn, and he says, "Good morning. You have a nice shirt on." He's stalling, right? He's playing with this, and then everybody just comes along. It takes care of anxiety. It takes care of roof chatter. It takes care of everything in the brain, the trauma that that child may have been, be going through, to have this play in community building. That's really the focus of what we're doing through music. I get very excited about it. We have an upbeat program. We go into the Community Continuing Care Center once a month, and sometimes we're the only group people that those residents have to come visit them. And they have little castanets or little percussion things that they can do. We also go into the gables. I've been taking third-grade classes into the gables, and the children will go right up to a senior and shake their hand and make eye contact. And we get up and skip, and the children will do whatever that body that they're in front of can do. And sometimes it's just this. Sometimes it's stationary. Sometimes that older person stands up, but doesn't skip, and they just stand, and then they sit back down. So the children are interacting with the elderly and taking their cues from the elderly. And we end up, it's essentially a conga line, but it's called clickety-clack. We're making a train, and we build it, two people, and then they go and they get a senior, and then there are two people, and we're holding onto our shoulders, and then we combine. We're four people, and then eight people. And then we have all forty people in the room making a conga line, mixing up eight-year-olds and ninety-year-olds. And the laughter. And then we all stop, and then we sing. We sing the song, and we make the train again. It's really fun to watch. We also have the Imagine Concert. This year, we had more than one thousand people come to hear the Middle Eastern Ensemble, and they talked about the different instruments that they play, the different languages that are spoken, and the style of dancing and singing, lots of drumming. That was very exciting. We had three different performances. Our stats and figures, over twenty-seven-hundred people are served through the Bravo program during the year. We gave six-hundred-and-fifty workshops. We're at twelve schools and senior centers. We have three artists and residents. All of that is free and no cost to anyone. The Summer Music Camp, we're starting our second annual Summer Music Camp. That'll be starting June 24th. That's art, storytelling, and music. And lastly, we needed a little bit of extra funding this year. We reached out and got some grants from the Optimist Club, from the Women's Club, and the Lions Club. And as the children were writing thank-you notes, I heard today from one of the teachers to the Lions Club, these are first graders, so their spelling isn't perfect, but they're coming up with their own sentences, and it was, you know, "Thank you for helping us with our music class. We love music. My favorite song is blah, blah, blah." "Thank you for helping us be kind. Thank you for helping us know beauty." And the teacher didn't plant this. The kids are, "Thank you for helping us be brave." I know, they were telling me, and I just thought, "Oh, that's so sweet." So lastly, I just have a few slides to show you, and then I am done. So here's the music van. The kids are trying the different instruments. He's blowing. Yeah. They are laughing so hard when they're trying to make these sounds. Yep. The cello, they play Jaws on the cello. Trying to get a sound out of the flute. This is a mi, do, re, mi, fa, sol, la, ti, do. This is at the gables. You can see the people in the background. This is the children introducing themselves and finding a new friend, meeting somebody interesting. There's our conga line.
So nice.
And there's the children in a class making their own conga line that clickety-clack the train. This is Joanne Yarbroth. This is me with a bunch of kids having a good time. This is the Imagine Concert at Nordhoff High School last year. There's their faces. They're amazing. Here's the Middle Eastern Ensemble, dancer, fully clothed, a relief to me. And they had us up doing some of the dances. Having a drumming lesson. Yeah? Making different... We do a lot of motion. We're moving a lot. That's it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Let me just finish by saying that the Bravo program and the festival itself can only take place as a result of three hundred volunteers that we have annually. It's really remarkable, and this community is really a remarkable community for that respect. The other thing is that the tickets that we have, only one-fourth of the cost of going to see the festival is paid for by ticket sales. Three-fourths is by the generosity of people in the Ojai Valley, mostly. And there are three hundred separate donor families in the Ojai Valley that donate to the festival. So volunteerism and philanthropy are the reason that we can exist, and I want to express my appreciation to the city of Ojai for fostering that. I don't think there's a community in the United States that has as many legacy organizations as we have. The tennis tournament's another good example of volunteerism, but, you know, we run here because we help each other. And anyway, I thought you'd want to hear Laura, because she is so inspiring, and those pictures of those kids, you know, is the payoff.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Jamie, for highlighting the... We did have a closed special meeting of the City Council, and I am reporting out. The action taken is to appoint James Vega as our interim city manager as of this evening with all the authority, full powers, and whatever benefits the job has. Thank you, James.
Addresses and costs.
Okay. We have now, let's see, we've got the consent agenda.
Mayor Johnston, there was one item I wanted to pull for a small suggested text amendment, number F.
Okay. Request to pull F. Are there any others you'd like, anybody would like to pull? Okay. If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item F?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any objection? So ordered. Bill, what's item F?
Yes, I just had a discussion with Chief Freihoff just about make sure we keep maximum flexibility in terms of the use of the COPS money, and the suggestion is on number two on page one-dash-three-six to change the two words "crime prevention" to "law enforcement." And that'd be the suggestion, as I may move approval with the change of words from "crime prevention" to "law enforcement."
No objections.
Okay. And where were you?
Where is this?
On the funding recommendation for 2019, 2020.
Okay.
There's one and two.
Yeah.
And in two, it says, "Equipment related to special crime prevention efforts." And he and I agreed it'd be good to just change that to "law enforcement," maximum flexibility.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Okay. We have the motion to...
Got a second, huh?
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Any objection to the motion? I don't think we need a roll call on that until we approve the item, so... Okay. Roll call on item F, as amended.
Mayor Johnston.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Yes.
Okay. Moving along. We have a public hearing of the council appealing a planning commission decision. Don't know how long. We're getting close to public comment.
I recommend we do cut public comment.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll take public comment now and then have the hearing following that. Do we have cards? Yes, we do. Okay. I know this guy. Chief James Freihoff would like to make a public comment.
Yeah, you do know me, and this'll be real quick. Mayor, council, city manager, Matt. Last council meeting, obviously, I wasn't here, but there were some questions during the public comment period about a vehicle that was towed and a dog that was subsequently run over by a car. I just want to be clear that those items were not contemporaneous with one another. There was somebody that was arrested for dealing drugs. Their vehicle was towed because it couldn't be secured. The dog was impounded by the Ventura County Animal Control. Days later, when the person got out, they were given their dog back. Animal Control would not release the dog without a leash. Subsequent to that, the dog was run over at some point and was killed, not a result of some action by the Sheriff's Department or inaction. We like dogs. If we were towing somebody's car for some legitimate purpose, which is the only reason we tow cars, we would have given them their leash. That's it.
While you're there, chief, I want to express, I think, a lot of people in the community really appreciate the work with the bikes, with the kids, the school-to-bikes program, having, you know, the extra effort for escort and showing the kids that you felt it was important. It really made a great impression, so thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. It's our pleasure. I mean, that's one of the things that the COPS grant is used for, right? So it's other law enforcement purposes, right? It's not just crime prevention. It's, you know, bike patrol, school resource officers, you know? We have a limited amount of money, and so we try and make that stretch as long as we can for equipment needs and for the overtime to help benefit the community the best way we can. The bike rodeo is great. If we could get more people to ride bikes, we'd be all better off. I think that we could talk about some ways to make that route a little bit safer. But that's something that, it's a topic for a different discussion or a different day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But thank you very much for recognizing that. We had a great bike rodeo, too, the weekend before, on April 20th, or 27th, rather. We had a good attendance, and we were able to give away about six bikes for the raffle, and I know we have some bikes to give away at the end of this week's Bike to School Week, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Masfidel. And let's see, we have Shauna Mastrata on deck.
Yeah, there's three of us. So, nice to be here. My name is Masfidel, and I am a resident and homeowner on Drown Avenue. And this is an initiative that I started about a year and a half ago, and this year it has built more momentum to slow people down on Drown Avenue between Grand Avenue, north of Grand, and Pleasant. And this is a unique situation because of the nature of this street. And I've analyzed this for some time, and we've got a petition that we've put together with about ninety percent of homeowners have signed it. We're missing some signatures because they haven't been home. We're gonna get that done, but if you'd like to see it, I made copies for all of you. And we all would like to have a street that is safer, first and foremost, and that allows people to respect the speed limit, which is twenty-five. What we're experiencing is people are driving forty-five, upwards of sixty miles an hour on this street. We've had, now counting, seven pets run over and killed. We have a number of children that live on this street that, quite frankly, don't, aren't allowed to play on the street because it's unsafe. And this street has a unique issue with it. One of them is, it's a very narrow street. I measured the street comparative to Daly. It is almost five feet narrower than Daly. There are no sidewalks on this street, which means that if cars are parked in front of their houses, that when you're walking down the street and walking your dog or walking your children down the street, you're walking on the street, in the middle of the street, literally. The street is old and decrepit. We have a resident that can't remember in twenty-five years that the street has been repaved or even marked with lines. We bought signs, "Slow down, do all of these things." Captain Freihoff, last year, started to do radar, some of the speeders on the street. But what we would like to do is implement speed humps. I have a second home in Encinitas. They're using them there. This is a small beach coastal community all over the neighborhoods, particularly neighborhoods that are family-orientated with libraries, and they work fantastic. The other issue is that there is a park up our street, and a lot of people are racing up and down to that park and to Topa Topa, rushing to the park to bring their dogs to this park, to take their kids to school, and it's really deterring the quality of this neighborhood. I offered to pay for these speed humps. Everyone else is also supportive of paying for these speed humps. All we want is to create a safer environment for everyone so that we can enjoy our street like everyone else in that neighborhood enjoys their neighborhood and their street.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. May I respond?
You have a question?
May I respond? I'd like to have your contact information, just so you know, this is a citywide problem you've just described.
Yes.
It's not unique to your street, and we are trying very hard. There's a whole group of us, we're working under, it's called the Complete Streets Committee. It used to be, we have a bicycle pedestrian master plan. Believe me, we are looking at these issues, and I'm very grateful that you've brought it to the forefront. Very important for everyone.
Thank you. And I have four or five other points as to why, because everyone's gonna argue, "What about my street?" Or it's gonna push traffic over to my street.
Sir, I'm gonna have to interrupt you.
Yeah.
The three-minute...
We're aware of all this.
I'm gonna be back every month. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight for this.
Okay. Good. Right. And thank you. I'm sorry to have to cut you short there, but there are other cards here. Yes. Are you Shauna?
No, I'm Michelle. So there's three of us. I'm Michelle DePratt.
Oh, Michelle Du...
DePratt.
DeBrat.
Yes.
Sorry.
I actually wrote a letter yesterday, and I'd like to read it. And again, it's all, it's all in regards to safety of our street, our children, our families, and our pets. I'm Michelle DePratt, a resident and homeowner of the upper Drown Avenue neighborhood, and writing this letter to address the safety of our road. I have lived on this street for over twenty-five years, and I've had concerns since I've lived here because of the speed of cars moving in both directions. As a residential street, the speed limit is supposed to be twenty-five, but most vehicles are going thirty to forty. I, maybe sixty-five, I don't know. That's what Mas says. Anyway, it's definitely speeding. Approximately two years ago, several of us purchased the signs that Mas talked about, "Drive like your kids, pets live here." We posted those, hoping that that would slow people down and remind them that we are a neighborhood. And after the signs were posted, my six-year-old cat was run over, killed, and left in the middle of the street at nine o'clock in the morning. The signs did not help, unfortunately. And so people are still exceeding the speed limit. As Mas said, part of the problem is the uniqueness of our street. It's very narrow. There's no sidewalks. There's no streetlights. It's a long street with a significant gradient. It's very easy to start accelerating and get up to those speeds, thirty-five, forty miles an hour, without even realizing it. I mean, I have to watch my gauge when I'm driving it, and I'm trying to be really careful. I feel the only solution to keeping our neighborhood safe for families, kids, and pets, to walk along our street without jeopardy of getting hit, is the installation of several speed humps. That would help remind everyone that we are a residential neighborhood and not part of a thoroughfare to the streets above us. I ask that this matter be given attention and responsiveness. We need to address the safety of our neighbors and not wait for another incident to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your attention.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. My name's Shauna Mastrata.
We finally got Shauna.
Yes. And I'm also a resident and homeowner on North Drown and a mother of a four-year-old child, and I'm extremely concerned with what I'm witnessing all day long, how fast people are going. In the last couple of years, there's been many young families moving into the street. There's so many animals. Our dog was just hit two weeks ago and killed. So it's a big concern for all of us, and we've gotten all the signatures that we feel are needed, and we feel like it's just a matter of extreme safety right now for the children and for their animals, and for just the joy of being able to walk safely down our street. So here's all the signatures we have so far, and we still have a couple more to get.
Okay. If you'd like to give those to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Yes. Can you also send an email copy of the letter?
Sure.
To the, through the city? Yeah.
If I, if I can get a second on this, I'd like to bring this back as a discussion item after the budget season, so sometime, maybe first or second week in July. I have done some homework on this, and I have priced temporary humps. They're about $3,000 a set, and they'll cover thirty feet. I think that street requires about three, three of them. I submit that we might be able to purchase these, we might be able to utilize them sooner than later, and if they are effective, they are temporary, we could use them here. We can then take them to Kenyatta. We could take them to a lot of these busy streets in the community and try them and see if they are a deterrent. So, but I'd like a second on someone helping us to bring this back as a discussion in July.
Okay. Staff will make a note of it. Under public comment, we can't take any action tonight, so we...
We have a future agenda item thing at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you for coming.
And I'd like to add to that, I'd request a report on what's involved in authorizing neighborhood bought purchases to be just put on the street on a trial basis, how fast that could occur.
So we'll follow up on this at the end of the evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Lenny, are you out there? Come on down.
This is what we need, is the citizens coming.
Good evening. Leonard Clay, 412 North Fulton Street. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, acting city manager of Vega.
Interim.
Interim. It says, "Acting on his sign."
He needs a new sign. He just got...
Good luck. I'd say congratulations, but I'm not sure if that's in order.
Welcome to Ojai.
Congratulations or condolences.
Before turning to the matter which I came up to address, I wanted to say a word about Bravo and the arts in general. I'm president of the Board of the Ojai Art Center, and in that capacity, I'm acutely aware of the overwhelmingly wonderful art and artists we have here in the city, and I wanted to add my thanks to the Bravo folks and to the city for supporting the arts the way you do through the Arts Commission. So thank you all.
Okay.
The reason I'm here is on tomorrow's planning commission agenda, there's a discussion item involving a proposed motel, or he'd probably be insulted if I said motel, thirty-unit upscale boutique hotel that, with the thirty rooms, two restaurants, and a swimming pool, proposes to have five parking spots on site. Hopefully, the absurdity of that will be apparent to the planning commission, and that proposal will be summarily sunk. But that does not deal with the parking problem, which is what I'm here to talk about. Maybe two or three years ago, if you were coming to an event at the Art Center on the weekend or Sunday afternoon, you might be able to find a spot on South Montgomery, for sure at the beginning of Willow, closest to South Montgomery. Then about a year or two ago, if you were lucky, you'd find the place sort of on the other end of Willow. Now, there's no way you're gonna find a place there. Many of the people who come to our theater productions are elderly. It really is a problem. I know, at least I believe, that the city has a separate parking fund with, into which channeled money from people who are allowed to ignore the regulations about providing parking when you open a business. I'd like to know if there really is such a fund, if there is such a fund, how much is in it, and whether the city's ever thinking about doing something about parking downtown, because it's a problem that's becoming greater and greater and greater.
Okay, thank you, Lenny, and as interim city manager, we'll get back to you with that information.
Alrighty. Thank you so much, members of council. I am Ron Solorsano, I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I'm here tonight to talk with you a little bit about some of our events at the library, but specifically about a big event which is coming up, which is our summer reading program for 2019. Our theme this year is "It's Showtime," which, sort of an open theme, if you come by the library, you'll see a lot, a lot of things roll into that. But the idea behind summer reading is that summertime is, it's a time for fun, it's a time for recreation, for travel. It's also a time that is a break from instruction for a lot of children, you know, there's no school over the summer, and one thing that we face as a result is what's called the summer slide. Summer slide refers to a little bit of a backslide with regards to reading ability over the summer. Some of what is learned over the school year can be lost over the summer if students are not continuing to engage their minds, continuing to read during that time. So that's one of the goals of summer reading, is to keep that going. And at the library, we are going to have summer reading running from June 1st through August 3rd. And actually, right now, pre-registration is open. If you were to go to our website or visit our libraries, you could pre-register by creating an account to track the minutes that children are reading. So a parent can create an account, a guardian, a teacher, theoretically, a student could create their own account, and track the minutes that are read during those summer months. For every 500 minutes that are read, a student can come in and pick up a free book from the library. And also, participating in summer reading will enter you into a grand prize drawing, which we will have more details about in a little bit, if you want to visit the library again, or our website. In addition, at the Ojai Library, we're going to have some special events related to summer reading. We're going to have a kickoff event featuring juggler David Cousin. We're going to have a magic show, I believe sometime in July, featuring magician Sean McMaster. And then we're going to end it all off at the end, near August, with a visit from the Kona Ice Truck. So we're going to have a close-off event at the library as well. So in addition to that, we just have a lot of our normal stuff happening at the library. Actually, on the 17th, which is just this Friday, we're going to have Vivian Mason coming by to sing some jazz songs and Broadway show tunes. We're going to have on Saturday, May 18th, Joan Dewhurst from the Santa Barbara Museum of Arts is going to be presenting on 19th and 20th century California landscape paintings. Also on Saturday, May 18th, Sunflower Bridge, which is a nonprofit organization, is going to be celebrating the launch of a children's book called Team Sunny, which is, actually was made in response to the Thomas Fire. Some of the youth who were affected by the trauma of that event got together, and this organization helped them write a book to help with the processing of that trauma. And so that's what the book is about. And then the last thing I'll mention is we have a program going on weekly on Sundays, starting on May 19th. People can come to the library and help us construct what is going to ultimately be a puppet that will be part of the July 4th parade, hopefully. So for more information, do visit our website, we've got a lot going on, and I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may ever have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it.
You're around during the day for questions?
Sometimes, I hope to be around during the day, yeah. You can always give me a call.
You're going to follow up with the county on doing some, on the site maintenance, I'm going to, I'll follow up.
Yeah, there is some movement on that, so follow up for sure. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other cards? We're now on item number two. Mr. City Manager, would you like to...
Yeah, thank you. This item, the, is back on the agenda. It was appealed on April 9th. It is the design review permit for the, a time extension for the design review permit for the eight-unit condo project at 312, 312 A to F and 314 B West Aliso Street. The project is known as Cottages Among the Flowers. On April 9th, the council appealed the retroactive time extension for this project with direction to staff to perform an analysis of section 10-2.904. That section is the replacement housing section, which requires replacement housing to be provided at specified income affordability levels if existing multifamily residential housing currently occupied by persons with very low, low, or moderate incomes is subject to conversion or demolition. So staff reviewed the project and reviewed that section, and performed an analysis of that, and has determined that this project is required to comply with that section. So the item is back on the agenda for council to determine next steps.
Okay, and this was a continued public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions before we open the hearing? If not, the public hearing is now open, and I have a card from Bill Miley with Craig
Good evening. My name is, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. I live on North Signal Street, and I have lived here a long time. Assuming the council will say yes to section 10-2.904, and apply it to the Cottage of the Flowers, as the city attorney's findings said, and that you will send it back to the Planning Commission for consideration, what happens there? It would appear best to accept the city attorney's findings and apply the replacement housing ordinance to the project, which I hope you do. Yesterday's Los Angeles Times, actually it was two days ago, described a recent addition to Senate Bill 50, which is the housing, big housing bill, where cities and counties not fulfilling their quotas, now this is, would be if it was passed, might lose residential zoning control to the state, where they would mandate four-unit housing in all residential zones on any parcel that's available. My thoughts on the Planning Commission review go this way. One, the Becker Group, I assume, will be providing, or may have already provided, income data for current renters to establish lower or moderate income levels. That will be necessary to apply, I believe. I think I know that. Number two, the Becker Group, these are options, the Becker Group could ask to revert the condo conversion approval and to multi-unit rentals and rehab each to meet the codes. But I don't see how that can be done and make any money. The rental prices would be, have to be beyond affordable income, so in my opinion, that won't work. Three, if an INLU amount was determined for replacement rentals, and that was to be placed in the Housing Trust Fund, that amount would have to include costs for land, and that would be impossible for the Becker Group to make any money. So that won't work, in my opinion. Ah, number four, a solution. Remove the condo conversion approval with the Becker Group's agreement, and place an affordable housing overlay on the property allowing up to 20 units per year. Give the Becker Group the maximum amount of density bonus the city can give, and apply 100% affordable rental, low income, very low income, moderate income, and make the lower income ones smaller so they can be affordable. I like the option, we'll all win. I want to support our council in this decision to send it back, but I would like the council to give the Planning Commission some guidelines on the options they should consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Craig, you're up, and Lenny, you're next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Craig Walker. I would like to make some additional observations about Ojai Municipal Code, section 10.2320. It says, "An extension of the approval of an entitlement may be granted only if the director finds that there have been no significant changes in the municipal code that would cause the approved entitlement to be injurious to the public convenience, health, safety, or general welfare." In Berman versus Parker, the Supreme Court ruled that aesthetic zoning, such as preserving historical and architectural resources, are part of a community's efforts to ensure the general welfare. Another significant change in the municipal code has been the new historic preservation code, which requires historic resource reports to be evaluated by the HPC and make recommendations to the Planning Commission. In this case, the injury to the general welfare would be the potential loss of a historic resource that has helped shape the character of the town for nearly 90 years. When the Cottages Among the Flowers project was first approved, it was given a mitigated negative declaration, which I believe was wrongly granted. A mitigated negative declaration should only be granted when the impacts on historical significance can be reduced to no significant impacts. This can be done by the project adhering to the Secretary of the Interior standards or adopting other mitigations that reduce the negative impacts to zero. The historic report confirms that the property is eligible for both the National Register of Historic Places and the California Register, as well as local landmarking. However, the report also confirms that the project does not follow the Secretary of the Interior standards in several important ways. It also states that the mitigations recommended in the report, though important, will not eliminate the adverse impacts. Even with the mitigations adopted, the property will clearly no longer be significant and may no longer be eligible for either the state or national registers, or even local landmarking. The threshold for a mitigated negative declaration was not met, and so a full EIR should have been completed. A full EIR would have identified alternative projects that might have saved these buildings. Even if we grant that an error was made, but say it's too late, and we need to allow the developer to move forward, the developer should at least be required to satisfy all of the mitigations required in the report. A resolution should be adopted requiring strict adherence to both the work as shown in the report and the required mitigations. This was the basis on which the project was granted, the negative declaration, and allowed to move forward. Are the developers preserving the siding on the structures not planned for demolition? Are they preserving the character-defining architectural features spelled out in the report? Will there be an evaluation of the final plans by an historic expert? Will the work be monitored by a historic monitor? Is the creek bed that runs through the property being protected? Please ensure that the renovation strategies and mitigations outlined in the historic report written back in 2006 be followed. Insist that the project be reviewed by the HPC as required in the new municipal code language, so that some integrity of the buildings and the review process can be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, Lenny, with Tom Francis on deck.
Leonard Clay, still at 412 North Fulton Street. It's hard to believe that 10 years have gone by since this project was approved. At the time, I spoke in opposition to the project, and I renewed my opposition at this time. If you have a million dollars to buy a house, you can move to Ojai. If you can afford $3,000, $2,500 to rent a house, you can afford to move to Ojai. The cottages are among a diminishing, ever diminishing number of affordable housing, which is critical, I mean, the Ojai general plan, which I still assume it means something, talks about maintaining small-town qualities. Million-dollar condos don't fit that basic premise of Ojai, as far as I can, as far as I'm concerned. This process where developers come in, buy a property, get rights, and then sit on it, and sit on it, and sit on it, and sit on it, ever increasing the value of their property interest in the right to develop, needs to be mitigated to the greatest extent possible. As far as I can figure, and this is not my area of expertise, and I may well be wrong, the Planning Commission can simply say no, their use right has expired, and if I'm correct, then I would urge you all and them all to say no, and let's figure out some way to use that property, which one is more consistent with the general plan and the overall interest of a diverse community? And finally, will limit developers coming in and think they can ride this stuff for as long as they can and maximize the value of the right they've obtained to the detriment of the public? Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. One more card, Tom Francis.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council. Again, thank you for your service. I just have a few brief comments. One, I just, where I grew up in Santa Monica and Venice, there were many cottages very similar to this, they're called beach bungalows there. There's probably 1% of them left at this point, but they're pretty much all gone. And there's not much of this left in Ojai either. So I think this is a huge opportunity to not only protect what I believe to be important historical structures that really are in alignment with the culture of Ojai, but also really pay attention to affordability. Because a big part of the history of this project, or of this parcel of land and all the units, is affordability, you know? There's dozens of people that I've spoken to that have lived there over the years, and you know, now we're faced with a situation where it looks like maybe the opportunity has passed for the landowner to pursue, you know, what they wanted to do, which was basically turn this into a commodity where they can maximize their financial return. And I, you know, I think you guys are in a unique position to steer this in a different direction. And so I just encourage you to approve the staff's recommendation to send it back to the Planning Commission, and get more information about what options you have. But this is something that could be really great. And I also just want to assert, I think I asserted this last time that I spoke, that, you know, yes, these bungalows are deteriorating, but part of that, in my opinion, is strategic neglect. And what I mean by strategic neglect is the landowner, this one, and potentially the one before, didn't do just routine maintenance just to keep them from deteriorating. And they have the resources to do so. Becker Group has the resources, they take care of properties all over the county, they have the resources to take care of these bungalows and do interim maintenance so that they don't deteriorate more, especially now, going forward, if there's litigation or a protracted discussion of some sort, as far as what the future of these bungalows, they should be protected and preserved, and there are simple things that can be done that are low-cost, that can keep them from continuing to deteriorate as they have for the past couple of decades. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards on this topic, so I guess, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, if I could add one thing, this report was prepared on May 8th, obviously today is May 14th, six days later. We've had some late-breaking activity related to this project, so the recommendation from staff at this time is not to refer to Planning Commission, but to continue the item for further analysis.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I agree, there's so many different issues here, and I think Leonard is exactly right. We, I think we've already taken steps to not consider business as usual in terms of retroactive extensions. I think we've changed our path here on this and other projects. But I think there's so many issues here, including the issue of referring to the Historic Preservation Commission, that I would suggest, and along with the fact that our, the other point I wanted to make that was just made by the previous speaker, is that the new Historic Preservation Ordinance also includes the prohibition against demolition by neglect for designated properties, which this is not yet, or maybe will not be. So I'm going to suggest that we continue this item for further investigation with a, between staff and a council subcommittee.
You have a motion?
And my motion would be that...
Well, I guess I should close, or continue the hearing, or are we going to...
I would, the question, given that we may not be able to predict exactly when it will be set for, in this moment, you might just close the hearing, and we reopen it a new-nosed hearing. That would require another round of noticing, but it's a little bit difficult to predict in this moment how long this will take, so the recommendation would be to close the hearing and then consider a motion to continue.
Okay, well, if we have no further cards for testimony, the hearing is now closed, or if you have a motion?
And so my motion would be that we continue this item for further investigation with a council subcommittee and staff, and I'm going to volunteer myself and Councilperson Blatts for that investigatory self...
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to establish a subcommittee consisting of Councilperson Wirick and Councilperson Blatts, the sequel. For those, yeah, inside joke, if you're new in the audience. Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, if not, clerk, please call a roll. Okay, if not, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me the final word on the item for the applicant who I know is in the room. Of course, the council subcommittee can't make any decisions outside the public's view, but the subcommittee will work with staff to review and evaluate the issues that have been raised here and in prior communications on the project, and will bring back a recommendation to the full council.
And just a point of order is that we are, the subcommittee can engage in conversations, including yourself and the city manager and the applicants.
Yes, very much so. Okay.
Okay, without clarification, okay. We are now on item number, what's it?
Three.
Three?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager.
And the city attorney worked closely with the cannabis ad hoc committee, so he will provide the staff report for that item.
Thank you, interim city manager. Briefly, as you're familiar with the issue, this has come back since its last trip to the council in December, and a subcommittee comprised of Mayor Protem Francina and Councilmember Blatz considered cannabis manufacturing issues and has brought forth a recommendation, and is detailed in the attachments and in the report. But briefly, it's to allow up to three micro-business licenses in the city, limited to the existing dispensaries, with a maximum size of 7,500 square feet, stretched across the existing operations of those dispensaries, plus what new operations they would add with the micro-business license. Independent of that, and on top, it also proposes two additional standalone manufacturing licenses at all four types of manufacturing, types N for infusions, P for packaging, six for non-volatile solvents, and seven for volatile solvents. That would be up to two, 4,000 square feet maximum size, only open to new entrants, not open to the owners of the current three dispensaries. All of these facilities will be limited to the M1 and MPD zones with a 300-foot buffer from schools and daycare and defined, other units as defined. The second large piece of this proposal is a cannabis tax. There will be a tax on cannabis business grocery receipts set at up to 10%, with the voters, of course, would have to approve that, and the council would set a rate within that 0% to 10% bound, and the subcommittee's recommendation is that it be set initially at 4% of grocery receipts for all three activities, retail, manufacturing, and distribution, and further that it be set as a special tax with the purposes for which the money would be restricted to be spent for, three rather, public safety, roads of transportation, and parks and recreation purposes. A special tax would require two-thirds approval of the city's voters and can be considered at a special election, which is the basis for the subcommittee's recommendation, to use a special tax rather than a general tax, which can be spent on anything within the city's power and requires only a 50% approval, because a general tax can't be put on the ballot by the council until the next election for council in November 2020, whereas a special election can be put on the ballot more or less instantly with a about-three-month window under the Elections Code. Further, the special election could be held either as a regular go-to-the-polling-place election or as an all-male ballot election. If held as an all-male ballot election, it would, within this year, have to be on the last Tuesday in August. Alternatively, a special election for, at a regular go-to-the-polling-place election could be held between 88 and 103 days, which is about a two-week window, 99, pardon, 90 days, three months out. The last piece, in terms of if the council is ready, certainly you don't have to act tonight, you can study it and take it up again, but if you're ready to act tonight, the recommendation would be to introduce the ordinance, provide direction on the tax aspects, and then direct us to return at the next meeting with an adjustment to the tax resolution, namely, filling in the question of what would your recommended election date be. And the second piece that we didn't have the information yet, we were waiting for some information from our sales tax consultant, is the expected amount of money to be raised. Elections Code, Section 13119, requires the ballot label to text it's on page 3-30 of the attachment. The ballot label has to state the amount of money you expect to raise from tax, and we didn't have, we weren't able to get that information in time. That piece would have to come back next time. But you, of course, can act as desired. And the last piece that's in the packet is a set of regulations that would be promulgated to regulate the operations and management aspects of the manufacturing facilities, structured similar to our existing regulations on cannabis dispensaries and delivery sites. And then the last attachment is a report from a cannabis industry group on cannabis concentrates, which was included to the request of the subcommittee to focus a bit on the industry perspective and bring that to the table. Staff notes that that wasn't reviewed, was not written nor vetted by staff, but is included for further information because it was found valuable by a member of the subcommittee. We're available for any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak? I want, there's some things, I was a member of the, I am a member of the subcommittee with Councilmember Blatz, for those of you that are new, and I do want to make some things clear about the staff report. I had asked during the meetings that, well, first let me explain. I want to make it clear to all my, to my colleagues on the council and staff and the public, I'm going to read from a statement, that Councilmember Blatz and I reached consensus on all the key points that were debated at previous meetings, the number of cannabis micro-businesses and standalone manufacturing and distribution, the square footage, reasonable buffer zones, and other issues that were debated in the early meetings. And if I say anything, Councilmember Blatz, that you disagree with, you can correct me. But I want to emphasize that page three and seven of the staff report on the cannabis tax measure, on this issue, we were not in consensus, and the staff report does not make that clear. I had asked, I had requested that it be made clear, that the cannabis committee had two trains of thought when it came to tax measures, okay? And I don't want to leave the impression that I was in favor of this. I wrote down, at that point in our discussion, we were in discussion with the city attorney, the city manager, and Chief Freihoff, and I stated that these recommendations should come from Councilmember Blatz, although I agreed it could be part of the overall discussion, and I'm open to a reasonable tax placed before the voters at a future regular election. But I want to make my own perspective crystal clear that I do not support structuring the manufacturing ordinance to only take effect if the tax is approved by the voters by a special election. In my opinion, any discussion on taxes ideally should be independent of the ordinance allowing manufacturing facilities and should not be put to the voters until the federal government takes cannabis off Schedule I and allows a legal cannabis business to deduct normal business expenses. And that's just the tip of the iceberg, why I think additional tax on top of the, I think it's the 15% that the state taxes, and we've read in recent weeks especially, there's been a flurry of reports how this additional cost is, the black market actually, I think, has, it's either the same or it's grown. And that's in part, not just because of the extra expense for legal products, but it's because there's a lot of cities that just have refused to have legal cannabis dispensaries. So I agree with our governor that it's going to take a few years, because we're coming out of a 100-year prohibition of a product that's been used for thousands of years. It's going to take time for us to find our way, but I just want to make sure it's clear about the taxes.
So it's clear that you do not support the tax aspect or tying the two together, okay? I have a bunch of cards for the public.
But I, I want to, I want to, just in fairness to my colleague on the subcommittee, I do, I'm fine with a compromise of a reasonable tax at a future date, but not at this time. Thank you.
Have a quick staff question?
Yes, question.
Approximate costs of having a special election?
Ah, the, oh, I'm sorry. So we did get costs, a standalone election would be $60,000 plus legal publication.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Plus legal publication.
Yeah, that's an estimate provided by the county.
Just an information.
And for the members of the subcommittee, the previous estimate that was provided was lower. The county, the city, pardon me, county gave us a new estimate yesterday.
Okay.
Was significantly higher than the previous estimate.
Sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand, roughly.
Thank you.
Slightly cheaper if you go all-male ballot at 57,000.
Okay.
Thank you. And that information was provided yesterday by the county who increased their estimate. That's where the change came from.
Okay, well, that's, before we debate the issue and we hear from the public, and then we, okay, so everybody knows what's on the table, and they know that there's a difference of opinion from the subcommittee. I have a card from Cecil Page. Come on up, and Bliss Page is on deck.
Hi, Mayor. City Council. My name is Cecil Page, and I am a resident of Ojai. In 1988, a group of doctors and researchers discovered the endocannabinoid system, which is one of the primary regulatory functions of the human body. The endocannabinoid system is the largest neurotransmitter system. It creates homeostasis, and it helps the brain communicate with cells. They discovered two receptors, CB1 and CB2, that regulate the biological system. When we live a healthy lifestyle, diet, exercise, emotional health, the endocannabinoid system regulates and creates cannabinoids that are needed for the body to reach homeostasis. This is all done in the body without consuming cannabis, thus the prefix "endo" meaning "within the body." Since this biological system was discovered in 1988, we have been fighting a drug war on some of the very same compounds that are naturally created in us daily. Ironic, isn't it? When we aren't living a healthy lifestyle, the endocannabinoid system isn't equipped to regulate itself properly. This is when phyto-cannabinoids can be utilized, "phyto" meaning "of plants." Its cannabis is healing qualities that have bonded us so closely with the plant for thousands of years. Its first recorded medicinal use was in 2737 B.C. by Emperor Shang Nang of China. With the very same cannabinoids being naturally created in our bodies, and having our human history date back nearly 5,000 years with zero overdoses and millions of success stories to date, there are very, these are very confusing times for the extremely beneficial plant. Only within the last 100 years of this plant has been demonized. Before that, it was encouraged to grow. It was so important, in fact, that in 1619, Virginia passed a law that required hemp cannabis to be grown on every farm in the colony. Only when this plant threatened the investments of paper, plastic, pharmaceuticals, it was made illegal. The U.S. government classified it as Schedule I, by definition has no medical benefit, but the government also holds the patents for the plant's medical benefits. It's time we ethically and logically assess this healing plant without bias. Our main goals are vastly different than your traditional cannabis company. Our primary goal is to be on the forefront of isolating and researching specific cannabinoids for their medicinal benefits on the human body. Anyone can make cash for a mild condition such as anxiety, stress, or insomnia, but that's only scratching the surface. I'm sure you've heard of CBD and its incredible benefits, but CBD is only one of 113 phyto-cannabinoids that have been discovered. THC only affects one receptor, CB1, which shows it's important to combine isolated cannabinoids at ratios specific to the conditions we are working to help. As you are all well aware, we have been working with the city for over 18 months on educating and assisting in the draft of a cannabis manufacturing ordinance. Since the process is slow and ongoing, I have had to look for a temporary job elsewhere. I was hired and put in charge of a large legal manufacturing facility in LA as their distillation director because my skills are highly valuable in this newly emerging industry. This lab is making recreational products only, so my time is not dedicated to researching and developing new medicine. These are some of the many reasons why we need standalone manufacturing and standalone distribution to be able to assist patients in need across the state. Being residents of Ojai, we strongly feel that our ethics and intentions reflect those of the Ojai Valley community and that we will be a great asset for the city of Ojai. Thank you so much for your tremendous progress towards this new industry.
Yeah, thank you, Cecil. Bliss Page.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Attorney, and Chief. I had the opportunity to read the staff report, and I concur with its findings. The unanswered question is the added city tax before you tonight. Prior to this meeting and over the past 18 months, the council has always supported no tax. We have been here many, many times speaking in support of cannabis manufacturing. Both our concern and the previous council's concern is that adding an additional city tax would then make the cost of the product to market so costly, it would push potential buyers to the black market. There are no manufacturers in Ojai that I'm aware of that is paying a city tax, as the law has always been clear, the taxes are paid by the end consumer. Please keep in mind that any standalone manufacturing that is approved won't even be up and running for more than a year with the requirement of both the city and state approvals. With a huge investment of both time and money, no guarantee it will turn a profit. Please allow us to move forward with our applications within the city as soon as possible, aside from the issue of taxes. I hope the council approves the subcommittee recommendations for standalone manufacturing and standalone distribution. Thanks so much for bringing this back to consider. I appreciate everything the city is doing in support of the legal market. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bill Page. The whole Page family?
There's still, there's a new Page.
Is there another one?
The baby Page.
We have a granddaughter.
Cecilia.
Mr. Mayor, everyone, thank you. Good to be back. I'm here to thank you for once again considering cannabis manufacturing. As you know, we've been coming to these meetings for a year and a half, asking for the opportunity to show that this can be a viable and safe business in Ojai, just as it is in many other communities. I want to discuss the timing of actually obtaining a state license. If the council were to approve standalone manufacturing and standalone distribution tonight, it will be at least three months before the applications would be available. Then there's the period of time for the city to determine who will receive the permits. After that, the application process with the state is a minimum of six to nine months processing before the license would be awarded. I see on the staff report, the council will be voting on whether to add a city tax to cannabis and whether the delay of the application process until the tax pays, passes. I have no idea when or how long the process of an election might take, but I assume it'll be quite a while, so I'm asking the council to please allow the application process to not be hindered by a tax election. This is unnecessary. We are happy to pay a tax, but the costs and expenses of waiting have been astronomical. We have two spaces we have leased and are paying on each month, along with utilities and other expenses. The city and state require us to have an approved location before we can even apply for a license, and there are zero square feet available at this time. The business isn't likely to even turn a profit for at least a year or two, so more waiting makes this less viable for us to entertain. Please pass standalone distribution along with standalone manufacturing. The two licenses are needed together to compete in the marketplace. If a manufacturer has to use an outside distributor, the fee can be as high as 30%. And if you also consider there are currently no deductions for tax purposes, taxes run about the same. 60% is a big squeeze for a new business. Thanks for being so open-minded and considering this ordinance again. I'm sure we all want this over, hope you vote to approve it, and we can show what a great business we will run here in Ojai. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you clarify, may I ask a question that maybe everyone has? It's just hard for me to imagine that the state taxes you, but you don't get any normal business tax deductions. Is that really correct?
It's federally legal.
It's because it's federally legal.
As soon as they turn that around, things will be better.
Yeah. I mean, that is a huge thing to grasp.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, thank you.
It really is. Thank you. Jeff Kroll. Is Jeff out there? Yep, there, okay. Come on down, Jeff, and Lenny, if you're still on Fulton, you're next.
Bring it in. Just bring it in, Audra.
Audra, Audra. Come on. Come in.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Chief of Police, City Attorney. My name is Jeff Kroll. I'm the president of Shangri-La Care Cooperative. We started in 2009, and we are affirmed as a mutual benefit voting corporation here in Ojai, where tomorrow celebrates our ninth year in Ojai. None of you were here when I started standing before the city council. I don't know, Mr. Maybe Matthew was here. Were you here in 2009? No.
Yeah, I joined the city.
That's right, it was Jack. So basically, it's been an evolution. It's been a learning experience for all of us. It's been nine years in the making. We would, I support the staff recommendation about manufacturing. I'm a little concerned about the tax. Basically, as you know, some of this tax could just be passed on to the customer. 50% of the people who walk into Shangri-La are over the age of 50, 60 years of age. Every penny counts for them. Some of them are on very low income, fixed income. If we want to use cannabis as a medicine, or even recreational as adult, instead of using alcohol or some other substances like prescription medications, we need to make it affordable. We also need that because- We also need that because there's no reimbursement for prescription medications currently as prescribed as cannabis at this point because of the Controlled Substances Act. I want to thank each and every one of you because what you've gone through has been just what I've gone through. It's been an evolution. You've had to study, and it's very apparent that you've done your homework in what the ordinance, the draft says, and everything. As for the tax itself, it's very clear in the drafting of this ordinance that it's called a privilege tax, meaning that instead of calling it a sales tax, it's a privilege for the city of Ojai to allow us to have a cannabis operation. I want to remind the council that seventy percent of the voters here in the valley voted for Prop sixty-four. They didn't vote for tax increases. I'm tired, as many of us are, that there's not anything that isn't taxed or charged at some level in our life. We have an opportunity to just hold off a little bit and to dedicate and work with the team. There's three of our storefronts here, and in sixteen months, we've proven ourselves that we have not been a safety issue. We've proven ourselves to be responsible business owners. We've proven ourselves in order to run our business successfully and with the guidelines that you've set forth and also the state. So I encourage, one, I do not want to wait for the approval of permitting for tax approval. I think that I will trust the voters to have their say. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. Lenny, you're up, and Laura Ward is next.
Leonard Clay, I'm not telling you where I live.
You're homeless.
I too cannot understand the connection between allowing distribution and manufacture and approval of a tax. If there was some enormous cost to the city that needed to be reimbursed, maybe I could see it. But in terms of the purposes for which the tax money is going, none of it that I could hear had anything to do with the regulation or overseeing of the businesses that we're talking about. So, and the last time I was here talking about marijuana, I brought out a joint and a bottle of beer and a cigarette. And the point I wanted to make was that marijuana is legal and it should not be treated differently than any other legal business. And it's a whole hell of a lot safer in alcohol and tobacco, and the medical uses are just beginning to be discovered by the people doing the research and beginning to be discovered by the general public. I would never admit to having violated the law, but if I had used marijuana before it was decriminalized, it would have been for recreational purposes. As I get older and my body is like, you know, I get this and I get that, I too am beginning to discover, this stuff is amazing. You know, the ointments, the salves, work! And they work better than drugs that have the side effect that can kill you. And, you know, I mean, I've only got a minute left, so I can't go into detail, but that's the God's honest truth. You go to the clinic, and as Jeff just said, most of the people are my age. It's not a bunch of kids hanging out there looking to get high. You know, they can do that on the street, and they probably do. And that's a fact.
Old people who are waiting to get high.
I'm not supporting it, I'm just saying that's a fact. It makes no sense to hold this up for a vote on taxing that's got nothing to do with the business, and it makes no sense to hold a special election. In November two thousand and twenty, probably everybody in Ojai is going to vote for the general election. You want to put it on the ballot then, put it on the ballot then, after you approve the distribution and manufacturing now. Thank you.
Thanks, Lenny. Okay, Laura, you're up, and Jamie Bell is next.
Hello. Hi, I'm Laura Rearwin-Ward, city resident and publisher of the Ojai Valley Newspaper. A couple of questions, also my own opinion. Questions for our readers, and you can answer them when I'm finished. Why did the subcommittee decide to put type seven back into the proposed ordinance after the city council had already voted to remove it? Just curious on that. And also, what would be the proposed annual license fee for both retail and manufacturing business? For example, the San Luis Obispo fee schedule has ninety thousand dollars a year for retail and seventy-two thousand dollars a year for manufacturing licensing fees. And I don't think there are any other cities that have cannabis manufacturing that don't have these fees and/or taxes. So in that, yes, I do want the grass to stop growing in my street. I do want a pool. I do care about recreation and the improvements that we can make as a city, and I am in favor of having a tax. Vote for a tax or you guys decide on a tax. I'm not choosy about it, but I did vote for, I did vote for legality of marijuana, and one of the reasons was that the streets were to be paved with gold, and I would like that to happen, at least at some small level. Thank you.
May I make a clarification to something you said? We cannot approve the tax. The voters have to approve the tax.
Okay, then I'd like to see that vote roll out sooner.
Yeah, it's just, the question is, a special election?
Sixty thousand dollars.
Is it tied to what we, to the ordinance for manufacturing or general election? Those are the questions.
I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Jamie, you're up, and Chelsea, you're next.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Jamie Bell. I'm manager over at Ojai Greens. Wanted to bring up the tax deal that, you know, everybody else is bringing up. The black market almost seems like it's gotten a little better now just because now the dispensaries have the taxes added to it. There's more, it's a lot cheaper for them to get in the black market. I think, we have a lot of people coming from, you know, Oxnard, Ventura, Guanajuca, up to us because there's not that extra tax that's added, you know, on top of the, on top of the product. So some people are, they want to save their pennies. They'll drive, you know, come for a drive from Ventura or, you know, even Port Guanajuca and come here because they can save five or ten dollars. We feel that by adding the tax would, you know, might, might keep some people away from coming up here. Ojai is a small area, it's far out of the way, and if we were just relying on, on just the Ojai community, we probably wouldn't be doing as good as, you know, as us and the other dispensaries are doing. So we would like not to see a tax on the, you know, for the marijuana tax. This business itself, just the dispensaries, can generate a lot of tax revenue, and then by adding the micro-business, you know, times three plus, plus manufacturing, that's going to just generate a lot more tax money right there as, you know, as it is, you know, to be said. It's a fine line between the black market and us and the little bits that we charge a little bit more. It's, it could be that, you know, overbalanced for them to go to the black market. So we'd like to hold off on any taxes for now, maybe until 2020, and see, see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea? And Andra is on deck.
Thank you, Council. It's always a pleasure and honor. I'm Chelsea Setula. I live in Ojai. I own Sesbee Creek Collective. Thank you for the time and consideration spent on the manufacturing ordinance. I support pretty much everything as is. There might be some things later. We'll deal with that when it comes. My main concerns that I'd like to address tonight are on the tax issue, and I do have a helpful spreadsheet for council, which I'll pass after I'm finished talking. I feel like adding an additional tax on this is kind of like saying it's a sin tax, just like tobacco or, yeah. You're effectively saying anyone using cannabis, whether medical, spiritual, or social, is deserving of some kind of punishment.
Excuse me. What did you say?
A sin tax.
Oh, a sin tax, okay. Thank you.
Yes. And not to be, not to be fooled, any business taxes will inevitably be passed on to consumers as a sales tax. So masking it as a business tax is really, it's not going to fool consumers. We'll make it clear to them, we can't absorb that, and I'll show you why. I mean, this is how you kill small businesses. And this is a slippery slope. I want to ask you a question. Will you also tax the businesses now selling CBD this and CBD that, making the claims that it's the same thing as what we are paying thirty-eight thousand dollars a year to the state just for the privilege of having a license to touch it? If new sources of revenue are a concern for you, I would really consider you to go to the next step and consider allowing things like temporary cannabis events, like wine festivals. That would be a wonderful source of revenue. Everybody would be happy, and it wouldn't be a tax. So this is what I'm going to pop up. This is just a comparison of cannabis business versus ordinary retail business taxation. On a million dollars of sales, assuming they have the same cost of goods, cannabis retail business is paying a hundred seventy thousand dollars of federal income tax compared to forty-three thousand dollars that a normal retail business would pay due to the standard business deductions it would take. That doesn't include the fact that we're also paying a twenty-four percent state excise tax or charge already on product costs. Other cannabis businesses, manufacturing, distribution are not paying this. We're paying twice market for rent. We pay enormous legal costs every month. We pay security that no other retail costs, retail business costs, and our payroll processing, if we can get it, also costs twice as much. If we can get a bank account, hallelujah, it also costs five times as much to have that. And in some cases, no matter how much you're following the rules and doing everything right, you might still be thrown in jail. And it shouldn't be lost on council that two of your three businesses are still fighting to get our stuff back from 2015 and 2016. Thank you for your service.
Chelsea? Andra?
Hi, Council. I'm Andra Belknap, live in Ojai. Just two quick things. Number one, I think the tax should be a totally separate issue. I don't, I don't know why we're talking about that today. Regarding manufacturing, I support cannabis businesses in this community because we have to diversify the local economy. I support good-paying, living wage jobs in this community that aren't in the tourism industry. Of course, we should be doing this. It's, it's, it's about our local economy. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. Nice of her to come.
Okay, that's all the cards I have, so.
Daughter of the former city manager.
Is that okay? I can't help myself.
All right, well, I think, I think I will answer some questions, tell you guys where we came from a little bit, and I'm sure sporadically during that, Suzie will tell me where I'm wrong. I want to answer a couple of questions first and explain how we got here. One is, we are the only community in the state of California who did not have a vote to approve cannabis sales first. We're also the only community that doesn't have a tax on it. There's a reason why we're the only one, because we went out of order. And we went out of order because we wanted to get access to our citizens. Prior to my existence on this council, we moved forward quickly, and we moved forward partly because our local government, our local sheriff's department, our local district attorney did something that this council disagreed with before I was on it as far as prosecuting and arresting the individuals who, some of them were here today, who operated these businesses before. And all of those things were in a context that was out of time before we got to where we are now, and now we're out of time to figure out what we're going to do moving forward. Are we going to do this the right way like everybody else, or are we going to find the other way to do it that is this Ojai way? And resetting this entire idea has been very difficult, but we are no longer looking at this from an access point of view. We're looking at this from a commercial point of view and allowing these commercial activities within the borders of our city. And without any taxes on them, we are currently not getting nearly as much as other communities related to our retail businesses that do exist. But I want to make this really clear. As far as manufacturing and distribution are concerned, we would never get any taxes whatsoever. Those businesses do not sell to a consumer who pays a sales tax. The only tax that we receive as a community at this point is we receive one percent out of the sales tax that's paid. That is it. We are much, much significantly lower than any other community that does this. And the four percent tax that we proposed is less than Port Guanajuca, is less than a lot of these other communities where we're saying people drive here to save money. Well, we're not saying it's going to be more expensive than anywhere else. We're saying that it's actually still going to be less expensive than everywhere else, just that the city would actually receive a tax benefit from it. Now, I don't want to tax anything, to be honest, and I think that the dispensaries have done a very good job so far. But the money they're spending and on the forward-thinking manufacturing and distribution, the idea that we wouldn't get any tax benefit as a city doesn't sit well with me that we're not getting something for allowing these businesses to exist. And the distribution and manufacturing are not access issues. These are clearly commercial activities, and they are not treated like every other business because you don't treat businesses that come out of prohibition like you do every other business. Alcohol has never been treated the same as other beverages. It never has. It's gone through distributors, it's had different rules, it's had different taxation. It has been uniquely different forever. So what we've done is look into this and try and figure out, hey, what have we done right, wrong, and how are we going to move forward?
Okay. And those are reports to all of us from the committee. Now, I think the deliberation should be amongst talking to ourselves with the audience being able to hear, to hear what we have to say, but I appreciate your remarks, Ryan. So where are we? Do we have a motion or do we have more questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions, but Suzie, you had your hand up.
No, no, no. Well, I, I just wanted to ask, are, this is difficult because I would like to separate the passing of the ordinance from the taxes, but there's still that open question. So I guess we have to deal, maybe the first thing we have to deal with is that question?
Well, we could separate it.
Yeah.
If we wish to.
If you want to, you know, propose, well, we don't even have a motion, so the motion, the main motion would be to introduce the ordinance, and then from there, we would have amendments to that if there were to be changes.
Or we could, or you could introduce an ordinance without the tax provisions.
Yes, yes, I would like, I'll make a motion to introduce an ordinance modifying the city's cannabis ordinance to allow for the permitting, regulation, and operation of cannabis micro-business facilities and cannabis manufacturing facilities with the, with the removal of the choice at the end that it's, I can read it to you. It's right here. At the very end of the ordinance, we have two choices.
You don't need to read it. Yes, you're just saying to, to unwind or divide.
So there's no connection between the taxes and the passing of the ordinance.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Yeah. I will second that because I think there's debating points on both parts, but I'd like to do both parts debate.
For anyone who doesn't know, it's on page, attachment A three eighteen, or eight, attachment A, page eight of nine.
Start down at this end. Ryan, Randy, do you have anything, any questions at this point, or you want to?
I'll hold off.
Okay. Ryan, you have any?
Yeah, I had some questions. I think you're taking your direction. If we do approve severing, I have some questions on the part of the licensing wording, but would now be the time, or after we get the vote to introduce it, that we discuss possible amendments?
City Attorney, give us some guidance on that.
It could be either way. We're happy to go through any questions on the text of the manufacturing ordinance as proposed.
I'm happy to see the sense of the council before proceeding.
Yeah, not sure if there's votes for it.
I have a question. Is the, the manufacturing fees, since that doesn't fall under sales tax, can that be imposed by the council, separate from an election, or does that have?
Yeah, the city council has the power to impose a regulatory fee on manufacturing businesses to recover the city's costs incurred in reviewing applications, proceeding, processing applications, approving applications, inspecting, permitting, and regulating the facilities. The trick is it has to, it cannot exceed our costs.
Is that the two eighteen or whatever it is?
Yeah, part twenty-six and two eighteen, both.
So the?
Take that. Some other cities have justified their costs at rather high amounts, and if we can get there with our costs, then we can do so.
You anticipated my question. Can we kind of look at the same? If we sever these things, we can talk about licensing. If we sever these things, we can talk about licensing fees and our business.
Right, because it just, well, how does San, County San Luis Obispo or the city?
I haven't looked at that particular one in detail as to how they justified $96,000 per facility. We can take a look at that.
They, they also did that, that cost was in addition to their tax at 5%.
Then it may have been voter approved upfront, but if that was in addition to the tax, we'll take a look at that. Our current fees are, I believe, a thousand for application and a thousand annually to the current three dispensaries. And I would expect a manufacturing facility would have a significantly greater amount of staff, building inspector, and sheriff's time involved in the inspection. So I would expect a higher fee, but perhaps not quite as high as some other places.
And Matt, it's worth clarifying that the current three licensed dispensaries do not operate on a conditional use permit or anything else. They operate on an annual renewable at the discretion of the city council license.
Annually renewable at the discretion of the city manager.
City manager, excuse me.
But yes, they are annual permits. And we've gone through now one cycle of that renewal. And all three of the original, originally permitted dispensaries were successfully renewed as they met the relevant conditions to be renewed. And if the ordinance is introduced, at second reading, staff will bring forward a recommended amount for fee.
Yes.
So I'd, I'd like to see if we have a sense of the council to sever for discussion. I think we ought to vote on the motion. Then we can discuss each in part, each in turn.
Okay, whatever is introduced tonight, as we have done in the past during, between now and the fact that we're getting focused on this, those of us who weren't on the committee, we have between now and the next meeting to take in more information and to amend further.
And we can amend tonight if possibly, meaning we can discuss tonight.
Well, you know, we.
You can amend to this evening or amend next time. And amendments next time if they're too broad would require reintroduction. But yeah, it can be done.
Yeah, well, my concerns are two. One, one is the economic issues and the impact on the city and what revenues would be reasonable to be collected. I think that, I won't mention who said it, but to treat it like alcohol, cigarettes, those are taxed. So if we're treating this the same, then that would not be in conflict with that concept.
Not taxed locally. No special tax locally.
There's also sales tax for all of those.
Local sales taxes is treated, we have local sales tax on cannabis.
Right, okay.
And, and, and they, and they get to deduct their business expenses.
Right, and the fact that the type seven is now back in here and when the big issue was over volatility, okay.
The, the subcommittee did not approve type seven being back in. I think it was in there as the idea, I, I don't believe we came to a consensus on that if, I, I did not agree with it being back in. In fact, I don't even think we were really looking at it. But it is in there probably, let's call it for discussion to make sure that we are there because if we are expanding this, it's at least worth a discussion. But I, I don't think there is a, my personal opinion is not against type seven. It's not, that I would not, not necessary to approve type seven.
Is that a point, just a discussion, is that again, an issue where we have a two-member committee and we had a split in the opinion?
Yeah, and it may have been there. You can see the, the length of the staff report and the number of moving parts. It may have gotten caught up and confused, but I don't, I, I believe, I think Suzie and I concur that we were not recommending type seven, but, but at least it's, at least everybody's aware of it being a discussion item.
Well, there was some careless language in what the subcommittee recommended since, you know, it's a two-person thing and we, some things are recommended with a one-person vote, which is not really a majority, so I got a little careless there.
I want to make something else clear because I have, my investigation about type seven, I'm confident that it's safe, that we can follow the state regulations. And one of the things I kept bringing up when we were in discussion in our committee was that it's our job to recommend what we think is best. And if we have different opinions, so be it. We make our recommendation, but of course, it's up to the council majority to weigh in and, and make the final decision. And I'm comfortable weighing in that I'm fine with type seven. I'm fine if, right, if Councilmember Blatz is not, but that's.
So there is no recommendation on the tax connection and the type seven. It's in here for discussion.
Yeah. And I want to remind this council that the first time that we looked at this ordinance, we, we did approve type seven. A certain member of the community raised issues that I think were invalid and.
Right, but the council's decision was to take it out. And now it's back, but it's not back with a recommendation to include it. It's just an issue that could.
It's a split vote. I recommend that it be included. Councilmember Blatz does not.
And the council had voted to not have it, but now we have a different, different council.
You can review it again, yeah.
Did, what was the staff research on the issues of fire flow and fire protection? That was one of the things that was raised. Do we?
Committee didn't take a deep look at that particular question on fire aspects. I understand that the fire, fire officials have a pine that it can be done safely with adequate inspections and with an adequate set of requirements imposed upfront. But it wasn't discussed in length. That particular question on fire safety wasn't discussed at length in the subcommittee. The discussion was a bit more holistic on that front.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we, we did it before and I suppose we can do it again. You know, introduce an ordinance and it's still subject to amendment.
Yeah, and, and, and it's subject to all the regulations by the fire department. You know, so I feel like, you know.
Well, there was, the, yeah, the question wasn't about the fire department thought. The question was what was the infrastructure of the city and the way of providing for fire flow and fire prevent, that was one of the big issues that was raised before. I don't, I haven't heard anything back on that, but.
Do we have a fire official here, Mayor?
Well, it wouldn't be, that, it wouldn't be from the fire department anyway. It would be from the, from the infrastructure people, casitas.
Well, and frankly, we have a litany of other considerations before we get to that very minutia detail.
Right, okay. So what's, what's the pleasure? We have a, we have a.
We have, we have a motion to sever the two issues for discussion.
And I, well, we can vote on it. I.
I would sever the type seven also from the two issues.
Well, yeah, that's not the current motion, but.
Okay, well, it could be.
Could be. Or we could, we could, we could vote to sever and then discuss separately before we introduce.
Meaning that it would then be put back on the table? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to structure the discussion here.
Yeah.
I'd like first to have the licensing discussion and then the taxation discussion. That's the point of my second of your motion.
Right, that, that takes care of that. And I would like to have the type seven also severed for purposes of the discussion.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that as the maker of the motion.
Yeah, I can do that by amendment to the second order if I have a second, if I don't have a second.
Oh, you have a second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to severing that as a separate discussion from the?
Well, I, I do, I do object. I just, I'd like to have it, but you know, I'm just one vote.
Well, we can call the roll if you, if you like.
Can you state your, maybe I'm misunderstanding what it means to sever.
Well, yeah, I think the type seven discussion is, is, I think right now it's fraught with a lot of misinformation. And I'm just not at all clear. For example, you talk about fire, water flow. My understanding is the fire protection for type seven is, is not necessarily associated with water. Doesn't use water, for example. That's not, that's not the right, that's not the kind of fire protection system they would use. So, so I guess what I'm trying to say is.
Minutia. I'm just saying if you, we want to separate the tax out, that would be, now, we could introduce the thing and then I could make a motion in 30 days or whenever to get deleted.
Like I said, I, I just think the discussion hasn't been well-informed and.
Could be quite true.
But I, I'd rather the overall separation of the discussion of licensing versus tax. But I, you know, I'm not going to stand in the way.
You're not just one vote because I support what you're saying. You're two, at least two votes. But I'm not clear on how to move this discussion forward unless, are you saying that you're not, I mean, I'm not clear on how to move the discussion forward if we, if we don't remove type seven.
I don't know if this clarifies anything, but I thought originally the committee brought back and introduced an ordinance. So the motion would be to put that on the floor and then we would amend it. Bill suggested we separate the question or divide the question, which is another way to do it. And I'm saying if we're going to divide the question, then I would like to include in that division.
May I make a suggestion? We, we, this sounds like a lot of the meetings we had, frankly. So what I would suggest, and I don't know if this dovetails with your motion, Mr. Wire, but let's at least see.
I second her motion.
But the, the order that we kind of looked at it was which types of these businesses do we want to even consider operating in Ojai? Then what regulations and restrictions, including size and other things on those businesses and how many do we want? And then if we're going to allow them to operate, are we going to tax them? And what methodology and how much would that tax be from the voting to that whole process?
I concur with that approach.
Those kind of were the three things, that was kind of the process we used. Maybe that would be helpful for this discussion.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. We go at it that way.
And I'm, Mr. Mayor, can we also clarify that if, if the council decide, the, the taxes can be handled two, two ways, right? The special election or the general election. And we can, I just want to make clear, we can pass this ordinance and then still handle the taxes in, at a later date. Is that, that's correct?
That's within the council's power, yes.
Yes, okay.
You could introduce the ordinance tonight and pass it at your next meeting and then deal with taxes at a later date if that's the pleasure of the council.
But I think, I think Mr. Blatz presented a sequential approach to discussion that I think is appropriate.
Proceed then. What, what is the sequence?
Well, the, the, the first question then, and, and under that is, you know, which, right now, we have three dispensaries. Under the California law, there's four types of cannabis businesses. There's distribution, manufacturing, retail, and cultivation. Cultivation has been unquestionably denied by this council previously, was not explored by the committee, and there's no recommendation to allow cultivation. So of those three businesses, of those three cannabis business types, if you have a type 12 microbusiness, you do all three. And then inside of that, we've said, all right, we want to add some standalone so that if you aren't currently a retailer, because you must be a current retailer to be able to do type 12 microbusiness, how many standalone opportunities do we want to make available to the community? And that would be either in manufacturing or in distribution. So our first question would be, as a council, how many of those microbusinesses do we want to allow, which the recommendation is allowing all three dispensaries to convert to type 12 microbusinesses if they so wish, at a 7,500 square foot limitation on the size? And on the standalones, how many of those manufacturing or distribution or a combination of both would we like to authorize to the general public? And with that, the recommendation is 4,000 square feet.
I have a question for Mr. Blatz. I have a question for the subcommittee if that's in order. One discussion that we had previously was that going in this direction so as not to overload the manufacturing district is that if operations wanted to continue on a retail-only basis and not integrating a type 12, whether we want to, would open up to, in a limited way, to the C1 zone, let's say along East Ojai Avenue. I see that that was, the, the discussion was, was a no to that. And I was wondering about the rationale for that.
What happened was, is in our, well, I should, I should also make it clear too. We had dialogue with each one of the retailers, the dispensaries and their, and their management. And what we realized was that there was not a strong desire out of multiple members to want to move into the commercial district, partly because they wanted to operate as microbusinesses under where they currently had operations for retail and wanted to expand into space that was contiguous with their current operation. We did have one manufacturer, or excuse me, one dispensary that considered it, but there were a number of other concerns addressed from staff and from law enforcement that made it pretty clear to us as a subcommittee that the moving, trying to incentivize any of the dispensaries to move to a commercial district. And the problem was too, that we found out in our, in our deep dive into all this, that there were some competitive inequities that were created naturally through the process because of timing and regulations that weren't necessarily hammered down. And one thing we thought was that if only one of the retail spaces wanted to move into the commercial area in town, but the others were going to remain in the MPD M1, that that would cause a competitive disadvantage to the other ones because of location. And we didn't think it made a lot of sense to separate them into a one, two, you know, at best. So that was, that was why we removed that from our recommendation.
You alluded to concerns of law enforcement. Could you articulate those?
Well, it was, it was kind of the idea, I mean, there wasn't a lot of specificity at the time, but the idea being if you got multiple businesses that you're worried about and the, well, I mean, look at the situation we have. Ojai Greens was, had a, had some illegal activity there. There were other cameras at other dispensaries that were able to pick up some of that information. So we, the, the general vicinity of them all being in the same area was, was, you know, benefits to law enforcement.
The halo effect was a major positive.
Yeah, I mean, it was at least a positive. I wouldn't call it one of the most concerned factors we had, but it was a, you know, benefits to law enforcement to have everything located in the same area.
I just want to know the reasoning, that's all. Okay, all right. And the specific square footage is?
We did do a deep dive into the, we did a full analysis. We did receive all the square footage sizes. We talked with the current retailers about their square footage size, what they anticipated wanting to move space into. And frankly, we were informed that they wanted a larger space than 7,500 square feet. But in looking at the, the, if you are the type 12 microbusiness, because you're conducting all three activities in the same space, that's why we recommended a 7,500-foot square footage limitation and why on the standalones, it's only 4,000.
Okay.
And, and just to, just so, when we had discussed this back in December, at least for me personally, I was not with the understanding that there were all three types of businesses would be in that square footage. I was thinking, I was thinking of them separately. So for me, the 7,500 was, was when we put it together as a composite for the three businesses there.
And then one last question on page five of nine, speak on the type seven issue. You have, I'll just read the bullet. Each building with a manufacturing area should be implied with operational negative pressure, high-efficiency particular filtration system to present noticeable orders. In other words, the air is only coming in and then filtered going out. Each building with a manufacturing area shall also be equipped with a flammable gas detection device and an automatic fire suppression system. Did that not, so there were concerns beyond the fire protection? Because I think that pretty much adequately, to me, my mind in a way, addresses the fire risk issue. Because these are contained, they're, 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 you know, completely encapsulated with these detection devices and automatic suppression systems. Is there a concern beyond the fire risk?
No, there was not a concern. What there was is a lot of these restrictions were in place from dialogue that occurred even prior to December before that ordinance was in. So there wasn't any subcommittee discussion regarding these. These are, for lack of a better term, brought in as other, you know, other regulations that were there.
So the concern is fire risk and the question of whether that, the conditions mitigate that risk?
Yeah, and well, we, as a subcommittee, we didn't analyze any of the fire concerns outside of a general idea that we knew that there had been a fire suppression issue, but we weren't, we didn't get any information on it, so we weren't looking into it further.
And the concerns there were both, the, the fire thing was raised, but not because what the process is, was more explosive than it was fire, but explosions then can create fires was, but that was only a small part. But the other was the question of if this is sort of a distillation process to remove poisons, why do we want to bring the poisons into the city? And I, I go a step further. Why do we want to use cannabis that was raised with the poisons instead of organic cannabis? It seems like we're sort of facilitating.
I could answer that, but I can, I know Suzie.
Well, what I, what I recommend here is, first of all, I investigated this on my own before we were, had this, you and I were on the subcommittee. But I recommend that, that your concerns should be addressed by people who are experts in this field that we have sitting in the front row.
Well, they're also the advocates for the process.
Yes.
And I'm not, don't mean to imply that they wouldn't be giving their best opinion, but it's, that was, that was a major concern when we discussed it before.
But the question, but you asked questions that I think are based on a misunderstanding and I respectfully request that you allow Cecil to speak and address your questions.
I would just suggest that with type seven, that question about type seven, manufacturing is a minutia question. Let's get through some of this before we get into that. We can have a debate about type seven versus type six, but until we've approved and agreed that we're actually going to do it, there's no point in talking about what type we're going to do.
Right.
There's such larger umbrella questions and this, this keeps getting us down. Let's, let's, I, why don't we withhold the discussion on type seven until the time after we've made these?
And the taxes.
Yes. And I think it's a very reasonable discussion. I think Suzie bring up great points. At that time, I'd love to hear from Cecil too, but let's not confuse that by getting too far in the weeds and forgetting about the main.
Okay, well, when this went to, to the, an ad hoc committee, it was, it was based upon the concerns you expressed, Bill, over the amount of manufacturing space we had and how much space should be allowed. allowed. That was what the committee was going to do, and they could...
They seem to have analyzed it pretty well.
Right, and they have. And so I think all that part's fine.
Yeah.
If that was the only thing in here, why don't make that the first motion, and let's introduce it that way, but still keep the other issues separate. They don't have to...
Well, we can. You're absolutely right. We can. To me, you know, my general opinion is that seems like a tiny deal in the bigger picture, but if we'd... If it would help us get through it to vote on type-6 or 7 first, I'm okay for anything that moves us forward.
No, that... I don't... I thought you were...
I thought you were suggesting we do the general concept first and then go with the specific.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're...
I keep trying.
I want to clarify, we're going to vote for the ordinance, but with the removal to with the understanding that we're going to discuss type-7 at a later time and with the... And separating the taxes from the ordinance. That's my understanding of my motion.
If that motion's in order, I'll second it.
So that would be a motion to introduce the ordinance as proposed.
Yes.
With the effective date set as the first option, which is simply set as 30 days after adoption, not tied to any tax.
Yes.
And with it approving, for now, only types NP and 6, and the question of 7 will be deferred.
That was not your motion.
Or was it to defer entirely the question of type-6 and 7?
No.
Your motion.
No, it was only type... Only removing type-7 for later discussion.
That was your motion, okay.
Yeah, no, let's...
I misunderstood.
I want to pass everything, and my compromise, so that we can move this discussion forward, is to, you know, get all the concerns about type-7 answered at a later point.
Right, so that these issues of fees and taxes and type-7 are separated out, everything else is basically what you're talking about?
Yeah, and the... And in determining manufacturing, manufacturing and distribution, and the allowance of any type-12 micro-business licenses, I think how many of those we would want and their size is probably... Is the preliminary thing we're trying to decide now. If we want to... I'm open to any other suggestions. It was difficult for us to decide. One, the reason, so everybody knows, we're very concerned about the M1 being overtaken by the entire cannabis industry. We want our small, only existing manufacturing area to be balanced so that it's not completely overrun. And even just the idea of this happening has caused there to be substantial movement in the rental market over there that has caused prices to fluctuate and other areas to be locked down for long-term leases, even though they can't even operate yet. So deciding how many and how big, I think, is imperative.
But originally, we had three, didn't we not?
But we've done that.
And they were tied?
We've done that, Ryan. This is our...
Y'all did.
This is our recommendation.
I know. Well, I'm trying to see if we... Do we want to vote on that? Do we want to make a motion for that amount of...
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
I just had a couple of questions.
Randy.
So just to clarify, we have three existing businesses that do medical and retail cannabis, correct?
Yes.
Those three businesses are entitled to micro-businesses?
Yes.
Not now.
Not yet.
No, if we pass the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, they will be entitled to the micro-business also. They'll be entitled to NP and 6 if we approve this motion right now, too. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. Type-12 prohibits type-7.
Right, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, great.
We started out with three now. So your question is, is are we... Is the committee coming back saying we should expand that beyond?
Not for dispensaries. It would allow the three existing dispensaries to manufacturing and distribution under their same umbrella, or to apply for a standalone if they don't want to be all three.
Okay, and that...
No, we prohibited the standalone, Councilman Blatch.
Then it has to be...
Again, you can change it, but that was the committee's recommendation.
Yeah.
The dispensaries could only become micro-businesses.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Right, unless, as the chief notes, they give up their dispensary license.
Right.
So are we going to end up with five or possibly two manufacturing? What is... How does that...
That's it. You're correct. We could end up with up to five or as few as zero.
Well, and let's also make sure we understand your recommendation of the subcommittee, which was to the type-12s in this would include up to... Would include type-6, you know, with the limitations. Prohibited from cannabis. The only thing in the standalones would be allowed to do specially different was type-7.
What?
I'm reading from page 3 point... On 3 point... 3 dash 4, page 4 of 9.
Yes.
So type-7 is what distinguishes the maximum of two licenses will be issued for cannabis manufacturing, and only to new applicants who do not possess any other cannabis business license issued by the city. The only distinguishing activity in your recommendation was the type-7 for those two.
And I already commented, I think it may have been some confusion on that.
I'm just reading.
Well, I understand. But we're separating type-7 out now, so it doesn't make any difference. The question is, how many do we want to allow all of the current retailers to do micro-business licenses? And then if we want any additional standalones, how many do we want and what size for all of them? That's really the initial question. Our recommendation is all three can turn into micro-businesses if they want, and up to two manufacturing and two distribution at 4,000 square feet standalone.
Right.
If we agree on those numbers, those numbers are very arbitrary. That was what we came up with, blending the number of applicants and people who we think are interested in the businesses with the space that is in the M1, and those are the numbers we came up with. I don't know whether we have a pending motion now, but if it'll help.
Yeah.
Okay, then I would... If we're only moving forward on that part, I would say we could vote on just that limited part at this point, if we want to check that box off, or I encourage more discussion about the number. Obviously, three on micro-business is obvious, because there's only three that can possibly do it.
Well, I think the motion is to accept the subcommittee's recommendation with the... Without the type-7.
Yes, that's the motion, yes.
Okay, but then that is expanding the number.
Right, and I would be... And I could not favor that. So I'd be voting against that.
It does not expand the number of dispensaries. I want to make that very clear.
But it would expand...
Well, any change we make is an expansion of the other types.
Potential number of installations.
Because we have zero.
So that's the motion. We can vote on it.
Let's vote. Let's vote.
Okay, you ready for a vote?
Yes. Are we?
I am.
Mr. City Attorney?
You ready, Ryan?
Yeah, the only thing I will say is that if we do it in this order... Well, this is an important part. The... If we vote yes on this and noted, you know, and no on the next part, and no on the taxes, then I do not want my initial vote to the manufacturing to completely be severed from that. It changes the conditions that we have. I'm not necessarily going to accept that.
Then you have that option.
Okay, right. Okay, then go ahead, then we're good.
Okay, I guess.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Councilmember Blatch?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. So now where are we, Ryan?
Now the question is, if we are going to allow them, and we've agreed on the size, then really the secondary question to all that is, are there any other restrictions and how are we going to deal with taxation?
And type-7.
We're going to do anything.
We're going to debate...
And type-7, of course, and type-7.
Need to debate type-7.
Yes. And whether or not we ought to permit... We did not... Subcommittee did not discuss permit costs. We reviewed other cities and what they did, but because we didn't have a very good grasp on what our allowances were as far as reasonable costs under Proposition 218, we did not make a recommendation on that. That's why we focus strictly on taxes, which we know we can set up to the standards we have.
Well, the city attorney stated he was going to come back.
So maybe the first motion ought to be...
Yes, and...
Randy, then we'll come back to you.
So maybe the first motion ought to be the allowance of type-7 manufacturing in the city of Ojai. That's a simple vote. That's a simple vote.
Okay.
So, but before we vote, could we have Cecil Page, in fairness, and...
No.
That's... Well, I beg to differ.
No.
Because the concerns, you don't have the...
Those are your concerns.
I'm sorry, there are also the community's concerns.
Right, but you know how you're going to vote and what you believe to be the case.
Right.
So having, you know, a continued debate of what we may not agree on, you might go ahead and get your... What you want.
Well, we introduce a motion and debate it.
Yeah, right. So you got a motion and a...
So the motion is to... To either... To... My motion would be not to approve type-7 manufacturing in the city of Ojai.
Okay, so that's a negative. Do we want to do it that way? Is that... That's okay with me.
Your motion.
Is there a second to that? Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, we're debating?
Not particularly. We debated it once before.
No, well, I would like... I think it's fair to ask Councilmember Haney why he is opposed to type-7, and be specific, please.
He doesn't have to be, Susan.
Well, he doesn't have to be, but I'm asking the question.
You're asking it, so it's in the record. You've asked it, okay, good.
So the people that I've talked to in this community are not for it, and I'm representing them. That's why.
Well, the people I've talked to in this community are for it, and I'm representing them.
That's right, and you can vote for it.
Can I weigh in with an opinion?
The system works. Certainly, go ahead, no.
The reason I will oppose this motion is I believe that type-7 provides a legitimate product that provides characteristics not available through any other manufacturing method. And it seems clear to me on all the reading that I've done that it is absolutely, with appropriate regulations, able to be performed without danger to the community. And with respect to the issue of being used for purification processes or processing in order to eliminate contaminants, my understanding about type-7 is it's removing contaminants that are just in the general environment, not something that is specific to a particular, you know, contaminated area, where you're talking about getting it to a level of purity that you cannot get just from, you know, being in, you know, in the general... The general growing environment, you know, anywhere in the... That you might think of in terms of cannabis cultivation, which we're not doing here. So I think it's an appropriate service that can be done safely, and that's why I will vote against it.
May I add something to that?
Sure.
It's also my understanding that they will... The manufacturers will do everything they can to use the highest quality organic products that are available. That's also my understanding.
Any further?
Yeah.
Okay, vote?
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Wait, wait.
You want to vote now.
Oh, no, no, I thought...
I appreciate... I appreciate your reconciling with yourself and seeing my opinion.
I'm so healthy, for one moment, I'm so happy.
The motion is no to type-7.
Okay, okay.
I must have really done a good job of persuading you.
We haven't even had any other product tonight.
That's right, the motion was in the negative. Okay, so no.
Yeah, good, all right.
Sorry.
Councilmember Blatch?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
No. I make a motion that we approve appropriately regulated type-7 manufacturing activity.
That's the reason I was wondering. We have one vote, or we did it the other way, but that's fine.
Well, we should...
It's moved and seconded. Yeah, okay. And that's for the type-7?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Appropriately regulated.
Say the obverse side of the same question. Call the roll.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
No, okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Bill.
Very good. Okay, now we're... What, are we going to talk taxation?
Yeah, so the... As I opined on a little earlier, I apologize for being out of order, the, you know, again, I don't have any desire as a human being to tax this, but I do think it's important that as a community, we look at this long and hard, because Ojai is significantly overbalanced towards its transient occupancy tax. It was brought up about balancing the city's economics. This is an economic opportunity that we're first to market for. I think we should foster incubate support, and that's what we're moving towards. But that means there's a give and a take. That means that the industry has to support the city as well. I don't want us to be uncompetitive in a taxation amount. That's why we've come up with this scheme. It's less than we've seen in other places. And frankly, the certainty of the industry moving forward may help by being an integral part of the tax base of the community. And this is not to penalize or hurt, but to help foster the longevity of this industry by making it symbiotic with the community itself. That being said, we looked at a number of other communities. Our taxation recommendation is lower than I believe any other community we found. We did not go into permit costs, but partly because they're currently $1,000, which is significantly less than other communities. We have followed closely with multiple articles being traded amongst us on the subcommittee regarding California's current situation, as well as Oregon's current situations, and other states and communities that have allowed this. And what we've seen is that the black market is doing better, but in California, it's not necessarily because of taxation. All of the dispensaries are selling a lot of products, so obviously there is a market for having this in the white market. What we did see, though, is that cities have put a stop to allowing these places to open legally, and that is where a lot of the black market is first, because the market for need is still there, but the legal places to buy it haven't been there. So these numbers that we have proposed are simply designed to be less than other communities. We... Most communities passed a... Had an election where they went up to a certain number. That's why we've recommended up to 10%, which is the same as San Luis Obispo did. But by no means are these numbers locked in or set in stone, or can we not debate them? But this is what we propose to be that right balance. The important thing, as I stated before, is that taxes on manufacturing and distribution, unlike on retail, there is no real capture of that taxation back to the city. And other than permitting costs or other fees, there's nothing that the city would see back from those particular businesses. And the, you know, the reports that have come back during our process have showed in other communities that the retail businesses have significantly contributed to the tax base in the community. Where in Ojai, we have not seen that, from our local paper to Ventura County Star, all addressing this. Based on some rough estimates of numbers we'd seen, there is a large amount of money that could be captured in there, but it's difficult to say, because we don't have access to all of the best data regarding to the dispensaries, and since they haven't operated that long. But we believe that it's... Well, I can tell you my personal opinion after the look we've done, is in the multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to the community on an annual basis, when we're talking about manufacturing distribution, as well as the three retail establishments already there.
Can I take... Comment on your facts? Is that's all right?
Yeah.
Be in order? You mentioned about the current tax contribution. My understanding, without disclosing any proprietary information, is, because it's public, is I believe that at least two of our existing three dispensaries have already vaulted into the top 25 sales tax collections for... Among all businesses in the city.
That's correct. I believe that's correct.
So that they already are making a significant contribution in terms of sales taxes. And I would argue part of that is because we haven't put extra taxes on it, that, you know, we have the volume. Are... To me, the... I'm... As you know, my position all along, Councilperson Blatch, is that I'm willing to consider the manufacturing side, because there's not sales tax imposed. I've always been... I've been very consistent in that. I do think it's particularly pernicious in terms of us wanting to establish a base, an economic base, that's viable, that can be taxed, to hold up licensing until there's a tax election. I think it's... The whole issue of whether you establish a base to tax should be there before you tax it, rather than holding up the... Everything on terms of a special tax. And the other aspect I want to make about that is that, you know, that kind of takes away the option for the citizens to say, we don't want... We want it, but we don't want it taxed. Whereas if you say, we're not going to let you have it until it's taxed, you've kind of taken away that option from the citizens.
Well, let me... May I respond?
Yeah.
Yeah, the... There was simply an option posed as to what the council may want to do. The idea being the balance between a special election and a general election, being that... And again, until today, we were operating on a significantly different cost for a special election. But the idea was that if we passed it and we'd capture enough tax before the general election, then that would mathematically be a benefit.
Would you object?
The separation of the two was a question that council had for us, but given the timeline on the application process and not being able to complete it, we could, as a city, decide to allow these, allow the other businesses, allow the businesses to move forward under legal status.
Right.
And then the tax could be decided later, and they will catch up to everybody by the time we would get along to that process, which is no problem. It was really just a question of are we, you know, do we want most communities put this out to their populace first? Most communities had an election that said, do you want this at all? And if you do, you're going to... Do you want to tax it?
And you mentioned, maybe we didn't do it the right way. I think we have done it I think we have done it the right way.
Well, we did it a different way.
Well, and, yeah.
Right or wrong?
That's what we do really well here, you know?
And I have no problem, and I understand why.
Different way is better.
Right. But, but because we did it out of order, there's just some, that, that question didn't arise in any other communities. So.
I'm not sure it's out of order, but.
Well, the, the other, other communities could not have approved it without the tax. They were attached together.
And I think there's a different premise here. You know, I think we were mainly driven by trying to provide access, expand regulatory, uh, uh, you know, offerings, the, expire the regulatory, expand the regulatory umbrella as quick and as much as we could immediately. A lot of these other communities approached it first was, what can we get out of this for money?
Yeah.
You know, and we didn't approach it that way.
And I, I completely agree, and I, and I have no problem with the way the city, and that's why I said that.
So maybe I, I just think I'm really, I really emphatically are, that if we are going to do any kind of tax option or not, at all, that we get going on the licensing and, and put it in the, in the general election.
Well, like, well, well, whether, whether we want to talk about a special or general election, I would say that, my concurrence is I agree, given the timeline on the application process.
Yeah.
To allow it to move forward now, with the understanding as well that these are annual renewable licenses, that if we decided as a city, or the city manager decided that the vote or other information indicated that the community did not want it anymore, we would still have the ability to do that. Now, I'm really hoping that's not whatever happens. So what I'm hoping is that we put these businesses in a position to succeed, we support them, and they get our overwhelming support, partly because they're going to contribute to our tax base. And in Ojai, we have a very serious problem with our tax base. And that is that we are so overly heavily relied upon the transient occupancy tax. When people don't come and stay in hotels in Ojai, the city doesn't have any money. And this is one of the few opportunities and one of the few economic interests that have come to us and said, "We want to work with you." And I am 100% for that. And if we wanted to, you know, in, in, in lieu of an idea where we don't have these taxes, I'd say, "Let's discuss how much." Because if we can pass something that's up to 10, we don't have to start at four, we can start anywhere we want. We can look at what the benefit is to the community. And, and I want to add too, the three segments that a special tax would pay for, transportation, public safety, and, 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 was it roads, was that the other one?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. And those can be adjusted. Designed because those are three areas that always need money, that are always good for the community, and no matter what, if we have them allocated, we can always use the money in one of those areas very easily.
Well, it sounds like we may be coming together on the idea of letting licensing proceed and structuring something to put on the general election for the people to decide.
I, I would still argue that depend, if it's, if it is, if, if we, if the timeline on the special election is significantly going to pay for the general election at the same time, then, then I, I wouldn't be against doing that. That, other than, but that, that is a close decision as well. But, uh, the only other difference is then we are looking at only a 50% requirement in the election.
One clarification on that, that would be to adjust the tax to be a general tax.
Right, and it would be general tax instead of a special tax.
And that's what I understood the recommendation to be. If you're kicking it to the general election, you may as well make it a general tax.
Anyway, I, I just. So you are in agreement with letting licensing proceed?
Yeah, I don't have any personally.
Ending, putting the question to the voters.
I agree, and I think that that, I think that's the responsible way to do it. Part of this is we've been trying to really work through this quickly. It may not feel like that to everybody on the outside, I think some of you know we've been trying. But is that we, we want to capture the first to market or early to market benefit. Ojai already did that, we want to continue that. We want to make this a viable industry in Ojai. We're offering the space, we're potentially offering the support, and we, we, if we can make it work that the city is going to benefit from it, not extravagantly, but in a reasonable manner, then I think we are in a really good relationship with these businesses.
Are we ready for a motion then? What, how is that motion framed?
Well, maybe a couple of other comments, thank you two for the debate. I don't know if I want Ojai to be known as the cannabis, the cannabis capital of Ventura County. So, so don't put that, don't, you know, I wouldn't frame that as what we're trying to achieve. I'm, I still question everything about it. I still question the fact that we started out this conversation that we needed medical marijuana or medical cannabis in this community, and our reaction to that was, we overreacted. Okay, the, the second thing that occurred, then they, we came, they came back and said, "We need to do retail." Now, the third thing they've come back to, and it's like, "Now we need to make their businesses more viable." That's what we're here to discuss tonight. Okay? How do we make a certain entity or a certain business in this community viable? And I don't think that's our job, so, um, I really struggle with this. Now, I also know that cannabis is here and cannabis is here to stay, so it's not, I know it's not going away. But, um, there's just been an incredible rush to this from day one. And, and that's where I, that's where I struggle with all of this. So, um, we, we can fight over taxing it or not taxing it, or, or the benefits to us versus the benefits not to them. If we do that, I think we need to have that discussion with every business in this community. I think they all need to be able to come forward and say, "What's in it for me? And how can you, as a council, do something for me specifically?" And, and that's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
So, um, like you said, I, I, I'm really struggling with this and I know we're going to make some decisions tonight.
Well, we are, if we get a motion, I'm still waiting for that.
We'd like to respond to Councilmember Hayes.
I'll respond to, go ahead, Suzie.
Well, you, you've, you've given this same speech at, at every meeting, and I challenge you to educate yourself further. I would be proud to, if, if Ojai was known as the, it's not going to be known as the cannabis capital, because every other city is adopting regulations, okay? They're slower than Ojai, so that's not going to happen. But if it did happen, it would, I, the reason you see it as a negative.
Okay, we've had a, this is, if you have a motion, we'll continue the discussion.
All right, I'll make a motion.
You both made your points clear.
I'll make a motion that we hold a general election for up to 10% taxation.
So zero to 10 by?
Zero to 10, with the initial taxation being at 4% across the board for each one, as is in the recommendation. And, but I would, but I, what's different than the recommendation would be, it would be in the general election.
Okay.
So I need a clarification on that. So do we put zero to 10 on the voting menu and the community does, "I only want to do 1%," or "I want to do 3%"? Someone explain that process to me. Don't we have, don't we have to tell them what the increase is going to be?
No.
Up to, yeah.
Happy to answer the question, yeah. The ballot label has to be phrased in the form of a yes or no question. And so it's typically phrased as allowing a tax of up to a certain percent. The up to is to be set by the council. You can add the point that it's set by the council to the ballot label, or you can leave it be implied. But unfortunately, we aren't able with the current rules to set up the ballot to be a choosier on a venture style.
But it can be an up to.
It, it can be an up to, it can also be set as a straight max, as a straight percentage, up, set it at 10%.
But if you vote for it, you will know that the initial tax is 4% or whatever.
Or it could be an up to without a.
That won't be in the ballot label, though, unless you want it to be. But I wouldn't recommend that, because then you.
Would you consider an amendment to your motion that it be an up to, just simply an up to vote?
Yeah, well.
Let's think, let's think that.
It wouldn't be a minimum, it would be an up to 10% vote, but I would expect that we would want the 4% on the label, so people don't think we're approving.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to say up to 10%.
But Matt, what's the reason why?
Then you could, you could structure that, up to 10% of grocery receipts with the initial, with the rate to be set by council after the first year, the first year rate to be set at 4%.
Yeah, I remember in the, in the, I believe in the San Luis Obispo ballot I read, I believe it did state on the ballot what it was. I would recommend doing that, but that's an issue we could take.
The issue I have is treating retail that already pays sales tax with manufacturing that does not.
Okay, why, why don't we just maybe separate this question out and bring it back when we know what exactly on the taxes? We're not going to tie it to the ordinance, we could, is there a, a problem with that? If we were to do that?
I mean, we take this up when we take, when we look at the second reading?
Yeah.
We can, I'm okay with that.
And let's do that.
Is there any chance we may have more information on the forecast of the financials at that point?
We have to get it, you can't adopt a resolution, putting it on the ballot.
We've had a hard time forecasting a lot of this.
Then let's continue the question until we, the second reading then.
Okay.
Yeah, we're more.
That's significant, I think we got a wrong one.
And as I understand it, the general direction of the council is to go with this general tax, the general election, so we can revise the resolution to reflect that, or bring back a couple of resolutions.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, so what do we have left to just introduce?
We're done. And I, and I will say too, as, aside from the tax issue, that will create a situation where that it will be taxed, there will be no additional taxes if approved, up until the election in 2020 and then sometime thereafter.
I think we, I think we, we get the more addition, we continue to additional information and, so I think we're good.
I want to make one more comment for staff, that I, since you were not present at the committee, I continually emphasize that manufacturers should have the highest legal fees that covers all our costs and to investigate those fees, you know, really see what other, what Goleeta's doing, other places where they, so that, and, and, you know, so that we definitely recover any expenses. And, and that could include, uh, what's the word? The normal expenses, but there's, there's perhaps hidden expenses to do with education.
Indirect and overhead expenses.
Indirect overhead, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll deal with the fees and the taxation.
When we, yeah.
At the, when, when the staff brings back the information and then with the, to the second reading.
The last question is if you wish to look at the regulations tonight or also look at those at second reading.
Let's look at that at the second reading.
That would be fine.
We got a couple other items to get after.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
It's okay with.
I agree.
Yep, I don't hear any objections. Okay, we, we're on item number four, and this is to the Ad hoc Committee recommending limiting or prohibiting smoking in multi-residential complexes. The, Suzie and I met with the staff and our, the, the long and the short of it is, is that we're not the first community to consider this. Over, over 100 communities have already done so. And one locally that we thought did a good job was the city of Moore Park, and we are suggesting that the city attorney be instructed to prepare a similar resolution for our consideration. With that as the introduction, I have one, one card. Steve Quillacy.
Is that the only card we have? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Quillacy, West Eucalyptus Street in the city. I'm not taking a position on whether you ban smoking anywhere in a multifamily place, but I have done some research into this part of the code. It's not part of what the Planning Commission normally does. But I see five, Title V, Chapter 10, Point 03A1, says smoking is prohibited in, quote, "all areas available to and customarily used by the public." And the sentence continues, but that's the gist of it. However, 51006 EF and H, sub paragraphs, allows smoking inside buildings. That's 506, 51006 EF and H. That allows smoking inside so long as the smoke is diverted separately from the general ventilation and air conditioning of the building. And presumably, it's dep, it's diverted outside, which sounds to me like the, the smoke from conferences or whatever other things are covered in EF and H is putting this smoke into an area that is available to and customarily used by the public. So I'm wondering how you square those two pieces of this chapter of this title. And if you're going to go modify Title V, Chapter 10, I would ask that you consider that you have a big inconsistency, excuse me, in that title right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the city attorney will.
I'm, I, yeah, we'll take a look at that as we, if the council so directs, as we write this ordinance, we'll take a look at that apparent inconsistency.
Okay, yeah.
Who, you know, how does this work? I mean, who enforces this? If you're in an apartment building and you're, you're smoking, do you call Chief Freihoff and he comes in with the guns and the whole thing, or?
Yeah.
What, I mean, you come with an ashtray and a water gun and, I mean, so, I mean, how, who, is this a police-level enforcement issue?
May I ask?
And is, am I directing you?
May I respond? Okay, I mean, I don't know the, the answer to the police part. My understanding is that it simply empowers the manager to say that this is the new law. And I would, would think that the police would only be involved if the, if there's a repeat offender, that if he doesn't abide by the ordinance.
Landlords already can ban if they wish.
Right, and if I recall, this, when this issue came before us, one of the problems was, I think we were having, we had a situation where management maybe wasn't enforcing those rules. So what do you do if you go to your manager and he's not doing it?
I don't believe, um, well, we, maybe we can hear from the public to help answer, but I thought there was a, what do you call it, a loophole or a glitch in the ordinance that allowed, for example, a public member, ATN, Emmanuel, that allowed his neighbor to, to smoke and it came in through the vent, right?
If I could add a little bit of clarity.
Yeah, that's the problem.
And all for, I don't think Mr. Emmanuel wants to necessarily get into the specifics, but.
I'm happy to add a little bit of clarity on enforcement options, if you wish.
Yeah.
Namely, that the current law is that landlords have the power, but not the obligation, to ban smoking in their multifamily units. If the city adopted the Moore Park ordinance, that option would disappear and landlords would be required in every lease to ban smoking in multifamily units, which raises the immediate next question, what if the landlord doesn't do so? If it's not covered in the lease, we could cite them, cite the landlord for failing to put in the lease. If the landlord chooses not to enforce the options he would have or she would have under that ordinance, then we could cite the individual tenant. The, the citing a tenant would require sufficient proof, if it's structured as a criminal matter, i.e. an infraction, it'd need to be proof beyond a reasonable doubt that the person was smoking. That would mean the code enforcement officer would have to see the person smoking or sufficient evidence in the end to convince the jury, although infractions are, not jury, they're judges. So it convinced the judge that you had the person smoking, a large amount of cigarette butts on a balcony, for example, a photo of that might be sufficient to support an infraction citation. The alternative option would be, and this is not in the Moore Park ordinance, but is as noted in the 27-page compendium of other ordinances, is a number of cities have adopted ordinances that allow for private enforcement via nuisance. And that would allow an individual, any individual to sue their neighbor to enforce the prohibition against their neighbor, if their landlord chose not to do so. Another option.
Would you repeat that last part?
Can't wait for that to happen.
I got a couple of questions.
It's an option, just noting it's an option.
Wow.
I, I got a couple of questions, if that's appropriate.
Well, I, well, I, 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 the problem is, I mean, I, that didn't really answer my question, so I have one follow-up, is that, what do you do? I mean, seriously, if the guy, if you're, if you're in a situation and somebody underneath you in your unit's smoking, you can sue him for nuisance?
Yes.
I mean, you can tell the landlord, and none of these are immediate. You know, and, and what are, I mean, generally speaking, right? Violations against the public like this are enforced by speaking to the police. I mean, if there was somebody drinking on the street, you'd call the police and they, you'd have the authority, right?
Yeah, the sheriffs could cite as well, if they observe it.
Well, I mean, I, so is that going to be the, I mean, if somebody calls 911 and says that? I mean, I know it sounds a little semi-ridiculous, but that's the reality of passing a law like this? Is that, uh?
I'll defer to the chief on that particular question, but I realize the sheriff does operate under enforcement priorities and limited resources.
Yeah, and, you know, and it might be nice for the public to know what the hell to do if there's a situation. Go ahead.
Do you want me to answer that first, or do you want to?
Oh, no, 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 I'm, when Mayor recognizes me. You're, you're up.
Okay. Mayor, are you recognizing me?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
You look familiar.
I'm here again.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, we, we would, we would go out and enforce the ordinance as described, right? Like any other city ordinance, we have the ability to enforce it based on the code. We work at the discretion of the city manager, where the representative for the city manager that has the authority to do that and the type of enforcement. And as the city attorney pointed out, that just like anything else, we have to have, beyond a reasonable doubt for citation, that we're going to issue if they're in their home and there's no windows or doors to be able to see in, the Fourth Amendment applies. I would have to seek a search warrant on an infraction unless it was deemed to be a misdemeanor on the city ordinances, for me to get a search warrant from a judge to say, "I'm going to go kick that guy's door because he's smoking a cigarette."
Mayor? I just had, I, I needed to understand a better public places within the city. So Matt, can you clarify public places, and as many as you can?
Uh, sure, so public places, anywhere where the general public has the right to go without having to pay a fee. That includes sidewalks, streets, anything owned by the city, anything owned by the school district, anything owned by any other government that's not interior, interior spaces. It also includes things like the arcade, the plaza, the park, walkways, spaces like that that are open to the general public. It would also include any business that's held open to the general public that doesn't have a membership fee or doesn't have a, like a private club, for example, that would say, "Oh, we only admit paying guests of a certain sort."
So it sounds like we're prohibiting smoking in the city of Ojai.
The current ordinance, to be clear, that's already been prohibited by the current ordinance. This would expand it to also prohibit smoking inside multifamily units. The only place that would be left would be two. One is a vehicle that doesn't have a child in it, that's been banned by state law, and two would be a single-family residence.
So people could go out on the street?
So that's banned on a sidewalk. In your car is fine, but not.
That's what I'm saying, go out, sit in your car.
Yeah, you have to sit in your car.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make an important comment. May I make a comment? Okay. Mayor Johnny, may I make?
Couple of questions.
May I make a comment, please? I'm going to. Okay, may I make a comment? That we need, let's remember what is driving this ordinance, this strengthening of the ordinance is lack of housing. Someone said to me, "Well, if, if your neighbor in the apartment's smoking, why don't you just move?" But it's a fact now that people no longer, many people cannot afford to move. But it's a fact now that people no longer, many people cannot afford to move. They don't have the option. Even if they could afford it, there might not be another house. So that's what's really driving this, is lack of housing.
Well, that and also giving some kind of standing to a tenant who has a lease and leased their property in a multifamily unit where it said it was non-smoking and then it turns out it is not. And the, I think the circumstance that was brought to our attention was that the local property managers don't have a lot of motivation to enforce something like this voluntarily because the investment owners of the complex don't live here and will probably sever the employment of their property manager if they, you know, disrupt the tenancy. Of course, in this town, I'm sure you could probably pretty much fill up all multiple residential rentals anyway, so it's not like they wouldn't have tenants. But the idea of somebody smoking in an adjacent with a common law, or common wall, maybe this thing needs to be refined a bit, but the idea that it can seep through into somebody else's living quarters is what was motivating us to try to do something. Bill?
But you spoke to one of the points I wanted to make. One, I think everybody understands you shouldn't have a right to contaminate another person's living space. I don't think that's a matter of debate. But this is much more broad than that. Because you can have units where you don't have contamin, you know, the ventilation system is built so that you do not contaminate other living spaces, but this would still ban everything, whether or not, in fact, there was a problem of migration between living spaces or not. It also treats e-cigarettes or vaping the same as open combustion. And I've done some research in that and the research is increasingly distinguishing between the two, between open combustion and vaping, and vaping being much less dangerous than open combustion. At least, that's the research that I've been reading. Maybe not accurate. But when it, it also says, in addition to cigarette, cigars, vaping, marijuana, and other similar devices inside multi-unit, I have two more questions. What is the definition of similar device? And number two, does multi-unit mean more than one? In other words, let's say you have a standalone duplex. With that, that would also mean...
Yeah, I understand multi-unit.
More than one.
Exactly.
So what happens if, let's say that you have a family that owns a duplex and you have two members of that family that both want to smoke and live next to each other, this would say you can't do that?
As presently drafted by Moore Park, yes.
Right.
What if it was a house on an auxiliary dwelling unit? Would that count as a multi-unit property?
No, because state law has defined single-family houses, even within a U as a single-family house. Although the city could write, that's for zoning purposes, so you could write that ordinance to pick that up too, if you wanted.
Then you also said we could, we could, you could enforce this against the landlord for not having it as a term of their lease?
Right.
Is that retroactive?
The ordinance has, you have to have an effective date. So all the leases going forward after that have to have it in.
Okay.
And all the existing leases, it's still subject to it because the city has, the council has the power to change what is criminal.
And I'd like to make a point, just to, if I could answer Councilmember Blatz's question a little more plainly, I think the two main ways we would enforce this, following Moore Park's lead, is enforce the, against the landlord to ensure that they have the language in the lease and the appropriate signage. And then alternatively, what Moore Park did was also make resources available to the landlord if he has tenants who aren't complying to call the city for enforcement.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment in response to what, your concern about the duplex?
What did Moore Park do? What was there, what did they add to help landlords? How did they help them?
You know, it's the language in here, so the language prohibits smoking in all common areas, all units governed by lease, and then it has the requirements for the landlord. If you look at the brochure that Moore Park created, it's really written in, to give that information to the landlord, as far as, if you notice on enforcement of smoking ordinance, the city's resources are available to apartments, owners, managers to assist with enforcing the city's smoking ordinance. If a resident is not complying with the smoking ordinance, you may contact the city's code compliance division.
Okay, so code compliance and potentially the sheriff's department would be two places to contact.
Right, and so we structured, if we structured our ordinance the same way, we could enforce in those same ways.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, please?
Yeah, I do have, I do have one more, one more comment card that didn't get passed.
I want to respond to your concern about the duplex. Let's remember that, yeah, as an example, let's remember that we're not going to go door-to-door sniffing people's apartments, okay? If there's two neighbors or you're a family, like you said, if nobody minds that they're smoking, they're going to be smoking. It's like any other law. It gets, only gets enforced, usually only gets enforced if somebody complains, somebody notices. We're not going to, it's not a draconian prohibition. It's to help people, a fan, like our, a community member who just had, you know, his pregnant wife was inhaling the smoke, the second-hand smoke, and now they have a new baby, it's to help, our duty is to protect the health and welfare of the public. And to me, strengthening this ordinance is part of that. But it's not a draconian ordinance that we're going to be knocking on doors, checking on what people are doing.
Okay, I'm going to call on the one more comment here and then we can decide whether we're going to give any instruction to the city attorney.
ATN.
ATN. Don't forget to put your name on it next to it.
The mystery guest.
Congratulations, ATN.
So, yeah, I just want to address, it's a great question you asked, because really, if a person is not subjecting, if they're not smoking indoors, I don't think, if they walk up the street a little bit or they're out, I'm sure you've seen plenty of people, you know, smoking outside places, it just is what happens. And so I'm not going to, you know, I don't think people are going to call the police to, you know, waste their resources about, you know, someone smoking a cigarette. But the right that we're trying to protect is the right to clean air, and that's important for everyone. And so when that gets infringed upon, that's when there needs to be some sort of support and these places become smoke-free facilities. And so then that just basically puts the property managers and the owners, they're now, they're now in charge of a smoke-free facility and they have to uphold that or else there becomes more, I guess you could say, like nuisance or tenant right issues that opens the door to those, whereas now, there's, they can still sort of like try to, I'll say, hide behind some sort of idea that there's, you know, they're in their own space that they're not contributing to, you know, the pollution of the other space. And so that's basically my comment on that, and that there's, people are smoking, you know, a lot of places, but if they're doing it in areas that aren't annoying or bothering people, then you're not going to have a need for enforcement. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, I think that would apply to your concern about vaping. If there's no odor, nobody's going to complain. Nobody's looking in somebody's window.
We're still saying it's illegal.
Yeah, okay, well, do we have a motion?
Good law to have. It's a good law to have, Mayor. Let's have a law that we can enforce.
Do you say can or?
Can, it's a good law.
Okay, so...
Well, yeah, okay. Well, I'll move to ask for, to be drafted and see if we can craft it in a way that it will protect everybody's rights. Maybe we could have a, you know, if you have a separate standing building, I suppose, you know, that might be a way to approach it. But when you have a multiple unit and then, it's like the, you know, when we first came up with the smoking laws, how many of you went into a restaurant and sat at a table and they said, you're in the non-smoking section and the person next to you is smoking? You say, well, they're in the smoking section, you know? And they're usually holding it down like this so that the smoke doesn't bother them while it bothers, that has changed by creating some ability to push back a little. That's what we're trying to get to. If this is not exactly the way it should be written, I'm more than happy to hear other ideas, but...
Mayor, I don't disagree with that. Like you said, I've watched, you know, I know a number of people that have smoked and I've watched their, you know, them stop smoking or, you know, smoke in a different manner, but, so I guess what we need to look at too is all the hotels that have rooms that say smoking and non-smoking. We'll have to direct something to that, if that correct, to remove that because we're not allowing smoking anymore. Am I correct?
That would be within your options. The current smoking ordinance does allow the non-smoking rooms in hotels if they have a separate ventilation system. You could lift that or expand that prohibition to also block, get rid of the non-smoking rooms in hotels if desired.
I don't think any of the hotels in Ohio offer smoking.
I am also not sure if actually any of them do.
I don't think they allow it, do they?
Okay, well, is there a second to my motion?
Yes, I second it.
So it's moved and seconded, you know, it looks like we debated it ahead of time. Shall we just take a vote? And, yeah, okay.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Heeny?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
I want to see something more targeted, so no.
Okay, it passed, so we will have something or...
We'll draft something, perhaps not by the next meeting.
No, okay, yeah.
We're going to spend our time on cannabis between now and the next meeting, but we will put something together for your review.
Okay.
Owners can designate smoking areas too. So that's my line.
Okay.
Thanks, ATN.
I don't believe they can.
But Moore Park ordinance does allow designation of smoking areas.
May I make another, one other request for research? Could you talk to your colleagues in Moore Park that that seems to be the model that the council wants to go over, their enforcement experience?
It's a starting point, if you don't, if you've got somebody to...
Absolutely, I'll reach out to Captain Fazio, who's the new chief of police over there.
What they have to say about their experience.
And how the enforcement goes. Just, you know, one of the other things that I mentioned it to the city attorney, and it's certainly something that you can look at, is rather than having it as a criminal statute, doing like we did with Social Host where it's more of a civil assessment, where if you're going to direct it at the manager or the property owner, that you do it as civil assessment, so it encourages them to do it because you can put a much steeper fine on, on that civil assessment than you would on a criminal thing, and it keeps it out of the courts and it just handles it with, on a civil front rather than a criminal matter in front of a, you know, a judge criminally, and then people don't have to worry about the records or anything. And then on the individuals, it could be a city ordinance like we currently have where there's no smoking in public, right? But for the management, you could probably have something that was maybe a civil ordinance instead to encourage their cooperation to not have this problem, right? Because if you're in a shared building and you're having to suffer that consequence, I understand the problem.
Yeah, and so we could get some experience.
But I will reach out to Moore Park and find out.
I would support what Kevin Freihoff just said, if we could include that.
We'll look at those options.
Yeah, that sounds really good. Okay, now.
Items five.
Okay, round number five, consideration of pickleball recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Let's get ready to rumble.
I'll give a...
Shall we take it one minute, right?
Okay.
Two minutes?
Yeah, okay.
We definitely have enough cards for a pickup game.
Yeah. Okay, probably several.
Maybe round robin turn.
Hmm? Back on the air here, guys.
That's the booming voice from up there.
Okay, our legal counsel has arrived to protect us.
He just had a cigarette.
Okay.
Yeah, but we just had a cigarette break, yeah.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I will give a brief report quickly. On April 23rd, council discussed the pickleball court needs, and it was stated at that time that the item was scheduled for the May Parks and Rec Commission meeting, which was recently held on May 2nd. The Parks and Rec Commission made its recommendations, which are included in the staff report. Couple items of note, one was to allow Libby Park Tennis Court Number Six to be used as a temporary pickleball court, and to, and then some long-term recommendations regarding an ad hoc committee. So those recommendations are returning to council for direction at this time.
Okay, what is the, oh, I have cards. You want to, don't want to go to...
We have cards.
And I have a question. I watched the Park and Recreation meeting, and I thought, because under recommendation, I heard you say something about an ad hoc committee, but they need our direction to create an ad hoc committee, is that, or not?
I think the issue was with staff support, and that requires council direction.
And I believe council, council members as well. Oh, no, you're right, staff support, correct.
But the staff support, that does require council support. Because that's, that's, that's resources being allocated.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. I've got a bunch of cards, so let's take them as they were turned in, or at least as far as I know, they were turned in this way. Elizabeth Hermes? With Jacqueline Francis on deck.
Greetings. Good evening. I just want to say, it's one of the delights of my life in this town, I've lived here 50 years, that I get to play tennis. And I reconnected with the sport about 30, well, about 20 years ago. Court Number Six is pretty vitally important to those of us who come out and play and who don't have memberships at other clubs in town. And I suppose you're aware of this, but perhaps not, because the rec department has use of, I'm not sure what the numbering is, but two of the courts at least, and sometimes Court Number Six. The Wile Academy uses Court Number Six at different times of day during the week. So it's really the only place many of us can play when we go out, and there isn't an option. We've been up to the top, we've been down. As the weather gets warmer, that's more so the case. So we actually show up earlier and earlier to try to grab that court, because if we don't get it, we don't play. So I know, Mr. Mayor, you traipse through, you know?
Regularly.
Try not to hit ya.
I'm being discouraged to do it by the number of...
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm all for pickleball, and I think it's great, I know people are thrilled about it, but to knock that out, to not make that court available to those of us who play on it regularly, it's, I don't understand the sense of it. These are tennis courts, they were built as tennis courts, they were, a lot of fundraising by tennis players to make that possible, that facility possible. So I would just ask that you consider some kind of alternate arrangement, so that people who want additional courts in town to play pickleball have that opportunity, and those of us who play tennis and rely on particularly Court Number Six, get to continue enjoying that facility. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Jacqueline Francis with Betsy Bachmann on deck.
Hello, I'm Jacqueline Francis, and I've lived here in Ojai on Oakland Avenue for 37 years. And nearly every Sunday, from about 9:00 a.m. to noon, I play tennis on Court Six with a drop-in tennis group. And we're about four to, you know, it varies in number each week, however many people show up, four to 10 on average. And when our group is playing, all the lower Libby Courts are in use. And this morning, I took a Park and Recreation Department tennis clinic from 8:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and I observed that at 8:30, four women showed up to play on Court Six. And they play every week, Tuesdays, at, starting at 8:30, on Court Six. And also, just, I ask you to remember that the Ojai Valley Tennis Club members worked very hard and earned the money to maintain and improve those tennis courts over the years. And giving Court Six to the pickleball players would be giving them a valuable asset they've not earned. The pickleball players, if they want a court, I believe they should work to earn the money to pay for it, and it should not be at Libby Park. One last thought, the law of unintended consequences might also apply to this situation, because I've heard from a tennis professional, Pac-12 coach, that tennis courts are really needed in groups of four to enable an efficient tennis tournament to occur. And we have several tournaments there, not just the Ojai Tennis Tournament, but many junior tennis tournaments too. So personally, I don't know the specifics of that, how that works, but there's, you know, more factual information that I think that the council needs to make, to obtain before making a decision. So in summary, I strongly oppose changing any of the Libby Park Courts into pickleball courts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment, because members of the public might, I want to, like to respond. I just want to make sure you understand that the purpose of the Recreation Committee...
I don't think we need to be doing that, Susan, right? Let's hear the comments from people, make your notes, and then we'll take it back.
It's not a fact what they're saying, it's not factual.
What is not factual?
They're state, they're, they haven't mentioned that this is for a six-month period. It's not a permanent...
Okay, but that's, we're debating the issue as opposed to getting information at this, you know, okay. So we now have, is it, Betsy?
Correct.
With Daniel Sweeney, McSweeney on deck.
I'm Betsy Bachmann, I live on Foothill Road in Ojai, and I'm one of the four people that play on eight, at 8:30 on Tuesday morning, on Court Six, along with Ms. Hermes. And most all the time, 99% of the time, we get there, it's available. If we're lucky, other courts are always in use, and it would be a shame to give that up even for six months. And the other part is, I believe the paddle tennis group, which we have some members here, did raise funds and created their own court at Soul Park. I think the paddle tennis people should do the same, and I'll yield the rest of my time to the rest of our crew here. Thank you very much.
Quick question, when you were talking about courts filled up, you were referring to the lower Libby Courts?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we often go up and look at the top too, and they're full.
Okay, so, okay. Daniel McSweeney with Tim Crowe on deck.
Good evening. My name is Dan McSweeney, I live at 400 Buckboard Lane, Persimmon Hill, just adjacent to the lower Libby Park tennis courts. It's pretty nice and peaceful and quiet there right now. We hear a little bit of tennis, it doesn't bother us because it's not very noisy. I don't think there was a lot of discussion, I wasn't at the meeting last month, I went and watched the video this morning. There didn't seem to be a lot of discussion about the noise level that pickleball causes. For people trying to play tennis next to it, it's incompatible. For people living around that area, it's going to be a big disturbance to the peace and quiet of our neighborhood. So I really think we need to start, you folks need to consider, not just the history of the Ojai Tournament, things like that which are very, very important, but just the, how much this is going to disturb the neighborhood, the people that live, excuse me, in that area. I've been there 20 years, I've never come to a council meeting before, I've never had to complain about anything before. I'm very worried I'm going to have to start complaining to the police and to the city on almost a daily basis if this is a major, it's going to be loud. I don't know if you people know how loud this is. You can have 16 people playing, there's four tennis, four pickleball courts on one tennis court, you'll have 16 people. They're all yelling, I play pickleball, it's fun. They're all yelling, they're having a great time, it's incompatible with other sports, it's incompatible. You wouldn't want it by a golf course, you wouldn't want it by a yoga studio, you wouldn't want it by your house. It's very loud, that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Tim Crowe with Mary Ann Bosa on deck. Or is that Bosa or Boss?
Boss. Good evening, Tim Crowe, 230 Saddle Lane. I just hope tonight that you take the Parks and Rec Commission's recommendations and allow this to happen. This morning at about 9:15, I took a walk through the park. The upper four courts, there was one court being used. The lower four courts, there were two courts being used. This was about 9:15. So I think we've got a park...
Please, folks, please, let's have everybody, regardless of your position, give them the eye of the respect and let them speak.
I think that we have a park, public park, that is underutilized, and we'd appreciate to be able to use it. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Mary Ann, you're up, and Kathy Lottis is next.
I'm prepared. My husband suggested that around this building, there is an open field. No one will be disturbed. The pickleball people complained that in many areas, there is no electricity, but around here is electricity and there is space.
Thank you. Kathy, and Sigrid, you're on deck.
Hi.
Howdy.
Mayor and council members and staff, my name is Kathy Lottis, and I'm speaking as an Ojai resident. And so I moved to Ojai in 2012 and got involved in the tennis program rather quickly, and it is the most fantastic thing about Ojai, I just can't say enough good things. I play tennis three to five times a week, and so I'm down there quite a bit in the lower courts, and I can attest to a rather heavy use of the lower Libby Courts by the tennis community. And the courts, including Number Six, are very busy in the morning, especially in the morning and the evenings. And so I won't repeat too much, but taking this, taking Court Number Six completely out of commission for the tennis players is really, would be hardship on the tennis players, and I think there would be a lot of queuing for the remaining courts that would be available, and it's certainly a possible scenario that we would have an empty court that would be set aside specifically for pickleball, not a sharing situation. And, you know, there'd be a lot of tennis players down there not able to use that court. So if you are going to do something with this, I certainly hope that you will absolutely limit this to a six-month period, and also please consider the option of doing what you did before in the last trial period where there was still a sharing situation, if at all possible. And just a related point that's kind of come up as a part of this discussion, I would like to say that the director of the Ojai Tennis Program is doing a superb job with all the participating adults and kids, and I cannot say enough good things about him. He goes way above and beyond expectations in every way. We are extremely fortunate to have a person of his skill, dedication, and teaching ability. And the director, whether he is a city employee or a contractor, deserves your respect and courtesy. Given the importance of tennis in this community, we truly need and deserve a director of tennis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sigrid and Reese Lamar on deck.
Hello, my name is Sigrid Bressler, and I support pickleball, but not at Libby Park, not on a temporary or a permanent basis. I also live in Persimmon Hill, and the noise from pickleball will definitely impact the serenity of our neighborhood. When I moved here in 1989, we knew there was a tennis court there, and that's what Libby Park is known for. I feel that four courts of pickleball with that noise factor will definitely impact the quietness that we have in our neighborhood. Secondly, this hasn't been mentioned, or maybe it has in the past, but I think there's also a safety factor of cars being parked along the street. As you know, because I've seen you walk daily back and forth, there are no sidewalks. And if there are more cars that are parked there, I walk my dog every day, no sidewalk, and I think that really is a security concern, a safety concern. So I guess I would just like for all of you to really consider the noise. Libby Park is for tennis, not for pickleball. I'm sure they'll find another place. I don't want pickleball at Libby, temporary or permanent. So please consider the noise and the safety concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reese Lamar with Mike Borders on deck.
Good evening. I sent the council and city manager, acting city manager, an email.
We got it.
And I have a copy, if anybody has not seen it.
We got it.
Staff committee, may I share that with you?
We got it.
I apologize. You got it? I have, I have. Yeah. I didn't get it off to... Yeah. So, did I already start? Okay. I guess I'll, I'm just going to read from this, that'd be just to get my thoughts in order. Thank you. "I wish to make a statement, please, in support of preserving all eight of the public tennis courts at Libby Park for the game of tennis and not allowing pickleball, pickleball to take a tennis court, even for a temporary six months, especially in light of the fact that summer is coming and the kids will be out of school and have more time to play tennis at Libby. I am a longtime Ojai Valley resident and a longtime tennis player. As I know you're aware, the Libby Park tennis facility is a very special treasure for Ojai and is well utilized and cared for by many. There are some very interesting plaques at the upper courts with a list of names of 85 tennis players who have competed in the historic Ojai Tennis Tournament, beginning in 1899, and subsequently gone on to win a major world-class title in tennis. If you have not seen these plaques, please do, I'm sure you will recognize some of the players. Tennis players deeply care about Libby Park and its tennis history and understand the importance of preserving Libby Park tennis. Our city recreation department runs an extensive tennis program at Libby Park under tennis professional Scott Burton, who brings high-level, enthusiastic, positive support to tennis players and cares about Ojai Libby Park. Additionally, I have noticed more public players coming there to play over the last few years. It can get quite busy there, especially in the mornings. I can appreciate the intent of pickleball players to create more courts for their game beyond what they now have at Soul Park and Matilla Hodge Junior High, but not by taking them away from the tennis community. In my opinion, this is not appropriate or respectful to the tennis community, and I'm not in favor of them taking a tennis court over for six months. When school is out June 12th, Matilla Hodge Junior High will become much more available for pickleball play for them, including in the mornings. Beyond not wanting to lose a tennis court, I believe the additional pickleball noises will negatively impact the enjoyment of and mental focus needed for the game of tennis. Presently, Libby Park provides uniquely beautiful and peaceful tennis environment, one of the things that makes Libby Park a true gem. I would prefer to see pickleball as a separate, at a separate location from tennis, and encourage the pickleball players to explore all options available. I have heard there are a couple of options currently being looked at, such as the Chaparral Auditorium for indoor lighted play and the old tennis court space at City Hall. I would like to offer pickleball players a few more ideas, please, in their quest for permanent options, such as Sarzati Park, there is a very nice area located between the gym and the playground worth considering.
You're going to need to wrap up a little bit.
Okay. In the county of Ventura, there's Oakview Community Center. There's a beautiful large indoor basketball gymnasium, as well as a large vacant lot, and the Oakview Park and Resource Center has lots of room there, so I, I'll wrap up, because I know, do I have 38 seconds, or?
No, you're done.
I'm done? Okay.
But I do have your...
To summarize, may I leave one last, summarize?
Okay, please.
I would request that pickleball players not be given a tennis court at Libby, and instead request to further pursue all other options to a more suitable location to not negatively impact Libby tennis. Sorry, I went over.
That's all right, thank you. Okay, Mike Borders, you're up, and Carolyn Burke on deck. And because of the number of cards and the lateness, we, you know, if you can kind of watch the lights there and keep it to three.
You've seen me before, Mike Borders, board member of the Ojai Valley Tennis Club, past president, resident of Ojai. I want to go over a few points quickly, our start, our presentation, which we may have one or two other people finish if I don't get through, which I won't. Council should recognize and honor the wishes of those people who built and maintained the courts. They intended that these courts be used for tennis only. Remember that the city paid only a small portion of the cost of constructing the courts and maintaining them over the years. Non-city donors paid over 85% of the cost over the last 20 years, including the Ojai Valley Tennis Club, the Ojai Civic Association, the United States Tennis Association, and many private individuals, including Jack Kramer, the Monroe Foundation, Herb and Jane Dwight, Mike Taggart, Tony Thatcher, Mark Wile, Harry Oppenheimer, and many others. And by the way, this is a note, the upper Libby Courts is contrasted to the lower Libby Courts. The upper Libby Courts and the annual tennis tournament itself are recognized as Ojai historic landmark. So these upper courts are essentially off limits. They can't be defaced or altered without going through at least a 12-month process of complying with the historic preservation laws. There is also an existing 1981 city council resolution providing that the courts will not be removed without the prior written consent of the Ojai Valley Tennis Club. I think we might argue that removal means taking one of those courts out of commission, even if it's only for six months. Next point, the council should respect the prior contributions of all the various head instructors, tennis directors, whatever we call them, the people who ran the tennis program for the city in building the city's tennis programs into what they are today. And the city, and the city should continue to support and expand the city's tennis programs, not limit or take away from them. Based on information provided by Scott Burton, who knows more about the utilization of those courts than anybody else, and others, I can tell you Court Six is heavily used for tennis throughout the week, as you've heard from a number of speakers already. But included in that usage are the city's pre-scheduled youth tennis classes. Court Six is absolutely needed on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons from... Court Six is absolutely needed on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons from four to six. The city's pre-scheduled junior tennis team, tennis, Court Six absolutely needed for the fall and spring eight-week programs on Friday afternoons from three to six. The city rents the courts, a number of courts, including.
You're in the red zone for a while.
Okay. Leased to the Weil Academy each day, those courts are committed to other uses on any number of occasions, as well as being used for public play. Every weekend, all the Libby, lower Libby Courts are full, as well as a number of mornings. And then, of course, we've got the various special events put on by the Ojai Valley Tennis Club. So, next.
You wrap up next.
If somebody can finish the rest of these remarks.
Okay, Carolyn Burke, you're up next, and Katrina Rice Schmidt is on deck.
Can we actually have Katrina Rice Schmidt go next?
If you'd like, if you.
It'll make more sense in our.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, come on up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Katrina Rice Schmidt. I live on West Eucalyptus in Ojai. Obviously, there are major issues trying to schedule pickleball time slots on a court that's heavily used for tennis, as Mike Borders noted. There are other issues inherent to pickleball use. That includes noise. Per prior demonstrations, the use of pickleball courts creates much more noise than a tennis court, especially if it's proposed to put four pickleball courts onto tennis courts, potentially sixteen players and sixteen rackets. This noise will significantly impact tennis players on adjacent tennis courts, as well as neighbors adjacent to Libby Park, Persimmon Hill, and other neighbors as well. Also, there's confusion of overlaid pickleball lines on tennis courts. When you're playing, in the recent four-month trial of two pickleball courts overlaid on Court Six, that resulted in numerous complaints from tennis players as to both noise and duplicate court lines. The proposal to put four courts, pickleball courts, on Court Six would make this problem significantly worse. There's also, another point is the risk that even temporary pickleball lines could damage the surface of Court Six. Even though Court Six is a post-tension concrete court, which is the gold standard of tennis court construction, it was built in 2003 for a cost of approximately $60,000. Such courts, the post-tension concrete courts currently cost $100,000. With no such courts currently, excuse me, with no, this court has no cracks or other deformities typically found in asphalt courts. But even to resurface this court, if there's damage to this court, would be $5,700 to resurface if there is any damage caused by temporary pickleball nets or lines. While patching of some minor court damage might be possible for tennis courts used for official tournament play for juniors, such patched courts will not be acceptable for the Ojai Tournament. We are informed by the pickleball spokesperson that only temporary lining chalk would be used, but also have, we've also heard concerns expressed by others, that sometimes those temporary chalk lines are not temporary. It seems like a really big risk to take with respect to such a high-value asset with such a high cost to repair, without any other clear idea as to who would fund the cost of resurfacing this court, should it become necessary. Using Court Six would set a precedent for other non-tennis uses at Libby Park. In the past, we fought off use of Libby Courts for BMX and other uses, paddle tennis, and instead of the paddle tennis group organized, they can raise funds, approach the County of Ventura, and get a venue other than Libby Park.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn, and Leslie, this, Gashay, Gash? Okay.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Burke. I'm the current President of the Ojai Valley Tennis Club. And as previously stated, the Ojai Valley Tennis Club has no problem with the sport of pickleball at all. We're just concerned with the use of Libby Park, even on a short-term basis. We are very much in favor of the recommendation of forming a committee, where we'd have representation from pickleball players, tennis players, city staff, where we can talk about both short-term and long-term options in the Valley. If we were to talk about some of those things in a committee, there's a lot to consider, and that's why we think not just talking about a long-term use, but a short-term use as well. Because with short-term use, there's a lot of details to work out. You'd have to talk about how do we share that court? What's the priority if both tennis players and pickleball players want to play at the same time? Which pre-scheduled tennis events take precedence over pickleball? And would require the removal of the temporary lines? How much notice would be necessary to remove those temporary lines? A really big concern is that the dam, any damage to the court and the almost $6,000 to resurface it. So who would be responsible for that? The city and the tennis community would be concerned about having the money available if there were damage to those courts. And so we'd have to suggest maybe there were a fund that the pickleball players would have at least that money available in case we determine that there is damage to those courts. Another thing is how we even determine a short-term interim use, is six months? How do we know that isn't extended? We just need to, you know, really consider all of those things. So we think the formation of a committee where we can sit and talk about these things and everyone's interests are represented, then we can talk about what are good viable solutions to both short-term and long-term use in the Valley? What are our options? Okay? We could come up with an agreement that would then be signed by all interested parties, and we could move forward in a way that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, Leslie, you're up, and Katie Fagan is on deck.
Good evening. I'm a member of the OVTC, I'm a board member with OVTC. But also, I realize that my name has been brought up in the past with the Soul Park Paddle Tennis, and I'm one of the original founders, along with my husband and another couple. And several years ago, for our passion for paddle tennis, we couldn't find a place to play, much like the pickleballers. But we never would have dreamed of approaching Libby Park and taking over one of the courts. So what we did was, we petitioned Ventura County to take over the two courts at Soul Park, and we turned them into three paddle tennis courts. And this was done through fundraising, extensive fundraising, by a group of four people. And we reached out to the community, the community donated money. We had, I was a guest chef at Farmer and the Cook. So we raised money from the Rotary Club, the Lions Club. So I'm just asking the pickleballers to really think about, you know, fundraising and finding other courts. They already have come to Soul Park and have taken our, one of the three courts, and turned it into a permanent pickleball court. I understand the use for lights, but I do really wish that the group would fundraise for it, just as we did many years ago. So, but I also am an avid tennis player, and I do play on Court Six. I'm not part of the 8:30 Club. We're the nine o'clock club, and they're usually there. We play, but then when they leave, we move over to Court Six. But I have to say, lower Libby is always crowded. I play three to four times a week, and if it's crowded, we do go up to upper Libby. And I, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, Katie, you're on, and Yoko McSweeney, you're on deck.
Hi, Kate Fagan. I play in the mornings at lower Libby, and I went to the courts today, and I would have used Court Six, but it was already taken. So, I played with Leslie and lots of people here. There's a large group of us who've been playing together for years, and we try to accommodate all comers. And when there aren't enough courts to go around, or if Scott's classes are overflowing to two or three courts, we do a rotation where we play all four positions and doubles, and then sit out a game or two, and then return to the rotation. And this way, we can have like five, six, or seven people playing on one court. So it's not just, you know, sometimes we have seven people, sometimes we have eight people playing on one court, but we're just switching around. So it's not uncommon to see one, two, or three players sitting around, waiting in the rotation, you know, on more than one court. And so it's really busy, you know? Sometimes we have a group of sixteen people on Sunday mornings. And, you know, don't want to give up the extra court, because that means we have to sit out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Yoko, you're up, and Randy Roth, you're on deck.
Hi all, my name's Yoko McSweeney. My husband just spoke a little bit earlier. So we do live adjacent to the lower Libby Park, and I just want to emphasize how loud that ball, pickleball sounds. It is definitely five times louder than a tennis ball. And tennis ball, when we hit, we hit with a string, and the pickleball, we hit with a flat surface board. So I just want to ask to be very considerate about people in the vicinity who lives near the courts. And not only like people who plays tennis will be totally affected by the noise, you know, it's impossible to play tennis while the pickleball is going on at the same time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Randy, you're up.
Thank you. I'd like to encourage the City Council to take whatever actions are necessary to help the pickleball players expand their opportunities here. Thanks to Tim and Brenda, I got introduced to the game about six months ago, and I immediately got hooked on the game, even for a person who's not a very good athlete. It's a heck of a lot of fun. As to the accusation that it's noisy, guilty, it is noisy because people are having a good time. The ball, it makes a distinctive clicking noise, and also, I'd probably guess that there's more yelling going on than the sound of the ball. Couple of points that are interesting. One is that the design of the game is such that a person who's elderly, like myself, and not a very good athlete, like myself, can still have a good time and get some good exercise. Second thing is that as the demographics of Ojai are going to change, there's going to be more people like me in my seventies, but who want to do something physical, but do not have access to a lot of different things. Third thing is that the design of the game is such that men don't have any particular advantage over women. Women can be just as good, just as devastating, as men. So I hope we can work together with the tennis people and with the Recreation Department to find a way for the pickleball community to get their needs met. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have, so take it back to deliberation.
I'd like to just ask a couple of legal allegations were made, and I was asked to ask the City Attorney for clarification. There was statements made basically saying that limiting choices Council could make regarding, I'm not talking about advocating a particular position, but saying we did not have a choice, even if we wanted to, in terms of restriping an upper Libby course court. Is there any validity to those statements?
That's one that I don't actually know the answer to. This is the first I've heard of a 1981 resolution regarding tennis.
We have staff can look into that. People would look into that for sure. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And the other question I had is about a lease with Weil Tennis Academy. My understanding is there is no lease.
That's my understanding as well. Weil Tennis Academy has an annual, I believe, annual application for a facility use permit to allow them to use some amount of the Libby Park tennis courts, not a lease. There's no lease signed with Weil.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Well, let's see.
But I can wait after Randy?
Okay.
I don't mind.
Well, you know, there's a number of questions that arise. And again, we're going to have to defer to staff, and this is obviously going to have to come back. But when I hear that the Tennis Association does the maintenance on the court, I'd like to know if there's a written agreement or a binding agreement, or if they do, how do we thank them for that? And if we have staff doing it, how much staff is actually spent doing it? So I think, I think the two questions are, does the Tennis Association perform maintenance? And two, does the city maintenance staff perform maintenance? And since the association turned over the courts to us, what, twenty-five years ago? Twenty years ago? What has been that agreement? And is it a written agreement, or is it a verbal agreement? I think that's important. The second thing is, I think we need to review the contracts of the individuals that are utilizing the courts. For instance, I'm under the impression that the Weil Academy has the courts for eight hours a day, five days a week, and I believe the agreement is for $1,000 a year. So if we did the math on all the hours and divided it into $1,000, I think they're a for-profit company, I believe that states it on their application, that they're paying roughly 32 cents an hour to use public tennis courts. So what? Do you want to get an answer to that? No. What I'd like to do is have staff look into that, please, and to look into that contract.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that application and the circumstances under which it was approved.
Right. And then the other thing is, I believe Mr. Burton is doing an outstanding job with the Recreation and Parks Department. But he has a contract too. And I think that we should review the contract, and we need to actually look at how much money is generated, how many actual tennis players are we creating, and what, I understand it's a 65-35 split, do we have records of how many students he has? And, you know, I just think all of this needs to be looked at, and not necessarily in the discussion regarding the pickleball, but just for good management practices. I think we need, I need a better understanding of that, of all those questions. Let's go back to the last thing, which is, to me, the use of public tennis courts in public property. And not, and not take away from the fact that these courts were built many, many years ago, and the fact that these courts were then turned over to an association to either maintain or develop or to enhance, we can't discard that. I think that's very important. And the fact that during that process, we created one of the greatest living legends right now in the United States, and that's the Ojai Tennis Tournament. So we can't discard that, and I don't think anyone's talking about that. I think what we're trying to do is to figure out how to provide an opportunity for another part of our community to have access to public property and to allow them to enjoy all of the things that every one of you talked about. You know, the interaction, the opportunity, the time of day, everything that you said, these folks would like that same thing.
Randy, keep it up there.
But, so I'm just trying to say that, so I think we're all in agreement that, one, we want pickleball in our community. I think we're in agreement with that. I think, I think what we, I think what we're trying to achieve is finding a place for themselves. So I've heard some good comments about fundraising, I've heard some good comments about wanting to be a member of that ad hoc committee. So I think all of these things are doable. I think personally, the best place for a pickleball court is right outside that room, right outside here and right over there. But, having said that.
Please, please, if you want to show your enthusiasm, happy fingers, but no noise, okay?
So, having, having said that, again, I'd like to defer back to staff and have them actually price and overlay on that, on that court, what it would actually take to bring it up to snuff, so that if this ad hoc committee comes together, they can at least have some funding numbers that they can look at and say, you know what, we're going to help you, and we're going to all work together on figuring out, do we need 20,000, do we need 10,000, do we need 50,000? But we do it as a community. And let that committee come back to us, and after working together, we'll make the determinations as to where the best place for this pickleball court would be, or courts. Now, the last question is, what do we do in the interim? And that's, and that's the argument tonight before us. The argument is, we shouldn't use tennis, public tennis courts for pickleball. That's the argument. Now, we've had a four-month period where we have been doing it. Now we're saying is we'd like to have another six-month period. And the other thing that we'd like to do is work with the Recreation and Parks Department and actually look at what are the needs of that department? What are What are the tournaments? What are the court, you know, what is Mr. Burton's classes? You know, I think we can work together with him, and with the tennis court, and the association, and figure out what's in the best interest for that, for that use. The short term is, the short term, I believe, is the pickleball people should continue to have access to number six. Now, while the ad hoc is meeting, or convening, then they can turn, can come back to council as quick as they'd like to, and let us know what their feelings are and what they'd like to change or do.
May I ask Councilman Haney a question?
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor? I've done a couple walkthroughs, and, and then listening to all the testimony tonight, and I, I, you know, I'm not a tennis player, so, and you're a former member of the Park and Rec Department, so you know a lot more about this than I do, of Park and Rec Commission. My impression is, there is much more utilization of Lower Libby than Upper Libby, on the courts. That's my impression. And that the condition of the Lower Libby courts is much better than the Upper Libby. Uh, I, I could be wrong, that's just, I'm asking you because you're more informed than I am. So why do you think there was this focus on the Lower Libby Court Six as opposed to one of the Upper Libbies?
Well, I think it's...
Just asking.
I, I think personally, it's the same thing that the tennis people like. It's convenient. You know, there's, um, more parking that's easier to access.
Okay. Just asking.
Those are the things that come to mind when I look at, when I look at Court Six.
Yeah. I was just looking at, I'm just asking based on my impression of looking at load factors.
And then the other thing too is, and, and I think this should be brought up too, because it's been, uh...
Okay, well, the hour's getting late, guys, so how about a motion as to, are we, is the motion to refer this to a committee, or...
Well, we can make that motion.
No, well, I, I don't, I'm just asking because it's, you are going to be here another forty-five minutes probably to finish up the...
Well, first of all, does any other council people want to weigh in, Mayor?
I just, I mean, I listened to the Park and Rec, and I thought that their discussion and deliberation was very, very thoughtful. They tried to address the concerns of the tennis community. So my question is, I'm very comfortable with the last three bullet points, but my question is, where did they get the notion, I mean, what's the facts on Court Six? Is it, they would not have made that recommendation unless they were under the impression that there, it was underutilized?
Well, I think it was also based on the fact that that was the court that was used for that trial period.
Oh, the trial period.
So they, they essentially just said, continue on with that.
I see.
So it may not have anything to do with utilization?
And it may not be the best...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think the ad hoc committee would bring that out too. But, but in the interim, I think the pickleball people, um, and players should just, should have a court to access, um, and let this ad hoc committee convene, and let's start working on it.
Yeah, well, for the, for the record, I'd like to, uh, just make the comment that there are many activities that people would like us to provide facilities for. Skateboard park was one. People raised the money, and probably somewhere between four hundred thousand and five hundred thousand dollars to do it, and they did it. There are people who would like to have, what is it, motocross, or whatever the bicycle thing is, and that they wanted to do something, and that didn't materialize. But we've had a whole, uh, bunch of activities that people would like to do. The fact that somebody wants to do it, and to take something that was a huge investment right now, uh, the tennis facility, and change it just because there's, I guess, both used balls and a paddle, I don't quite get that. I think that, I agree with you, Randy, I think that this, uh, uh, court right out in front here, uh, probably for fifty thousand dollars, could be resurfaced fenced, uh, lights, uh, and done probably in less than three months. If somebody wanted to do it, and I would think that if this is a fast-growing activity, that, uh, it's quiet, but it's distracting, thank you. It, it would just seem as though the pickleball industry would be thrilled, uh, to invest some money here, uh, and, and help out, and, uh, there are other groups, including some members of the tennis association, who'd say that they would be willing to help so as not to have the other problem. Uh, so I'm not quite sure how the, the momentum of this whole thing, maybe this is the only way we ever get to decisions, is to, in Ojai, is to bring it to a head, but it just seems like, rather than spend a whole lot of time in staff and committee work, uh, it is to sit down and just see what is the potential of that very quickly, and, uh, pass the hat. I don't think it would take that much to, to put it into, and it would also maintain a facility that's been neglected.
Right. I, again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but we, we still need to address the, the access on a short-term basis for, for, um, pickleball, and again, uh, that was done through the Recreation and Parks Program for a four-month period. Uh, for some reason, it seemed to have worked. No one, I didn't see anyone from the public coming here during that four-month period arguing that we've taken a tennis court away from the, from the tennis association, or the tennis players in the community. So, uh, I think whatever's been working, let's let it work. Um, and I agree, let's get this back to us as soon as we can through the Public Works Director. And we're also heading into the, to the budget time of the year. There might be some funding in the CIP that we might be able to attach ourselves to, to, to help move this court along.
Is that a motion?
No, I haven't, but I have another question. Reese, Reese said that when school is out, June twelfth, Matilla High Junior High will become much more available for pickleball. I mean, does the summer schedule make more courts available for pickleball, so you wouldn't...
There's nobody in school.
Yeah, so, so maybe for that reason, and the timing, is that, because I'm not comfortable with using Court Six, because I'm also concerned about the noise, aside from everything else, okay? And it's been, and, and if it is, there isn't, if there is availability for the summer months, I mean, I think for the goodwill and working together, there's the potential to work together seems greater if we, if we do not use Court Six. That's, that's my take. Um, you know, because they, my impression is that the tennis community wants to help the pickleball community. So, it seems like a good move to not...
Let me address two things real quick. First of all, first of all, let's talk the noise, and, uh, it's, I don't think it's fair to the gentleman that came and brought the pickleballs that he did, but, um, my sister, who plays this five days a week, her and I were talking, and she said, first of all, there's coated balls. So that takes away this, this noise that was demonstrated that evening in front of us. So, so I'm just saying, that's, that's her take on it. As far as the noise to the community...
Please, please.
As far as the noise to the community, my sister did say it was, it, that it can be a noisy sport, and she's, her statement was, is as soon as they put the green cloth along the perimeters of the tennis courts, that it took that noise away. We're not going to do that, okay? I understand that. So again, I'm not disagree, I'm not in disagreement that there's some issues. What, what we're saying is, the short term is, let's figure this out, and the long term, let's figure this out. And so the short term, as I say, we continue what we're doing, and we work with the Recreation and Parks Department, and we continue using Court Six unless Court Five or Court Four, or Court Three or Court One is a better one than someone say so. But there's nothing wrong with giving them a court for the short-term period, and then let's, let's resolve this issue.
But my question is, is it necessary to give them the court if there's courts, other courts available during the summer months?
The Nordhoff?
Yes, yes.
Please, please, guys, yeah.
Can we find that out? Can we find out?
Yeah, and we, we can look into that, and they, the other point that I will make just about the trial period, was that that trial period, the reason why that four-month period was initially set was due to daylight savings time. So that isn't necessarily an issue at this moment either.
Oh, because of the longer days? Okay, that's good to know. Okay.
All right, so I'll take a stab at a motion, that, um, first, first of all, that we moved it to the Recreation and Parks Comi, um, Commission, that they do create their ad hoc committee, and that it do consist of two members from the pickleball community, two members of the tennis association, and two members of, um, the local residents. So, um, you'll have to figure out how to connect. I would go to the Recreation and Parks Commission to, um, raise a hand if you want to be on that ad hoc committee. The second thing is, I'll go along with what I'm hearing here, and that we, that we, uh, provide Court Six up until school letting out, which is what, June fourteenth? June seventeen, something of that nature?
I have a question.
Now, hear me out. Let me finish this, and then if you want to amend it, you can. And then at that point in time, um, we can take the Court Six out of play, and give pick, and try and coordinate something with Matilla High Junior High to let the, uh, pickleball courts be set up there on a permanent basis during the summer. That's out of our control, but it's something that is worth staying, stating. So we have the ad hoc committee, we have a short-term use of the facility until school lets out. We're in May, it's probably less than a month. And, um, and then that we kind, the staff come back with all the issues that we did bring up regarding, um, the use of the facility, so that we as a council have a better idea, um, moving forward, what's going on there.
Well, may I have a response? I think it's essential that we separate the, the issues, you know, but, the, so let...
Okay, do we have a second to the first part, do, before we, if we're going to, because it sounds like you want to amend it?
Yeah.
But is there even a second to the first one?
Okay. That's fine. I figured that out.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay.
I want to be clear, are the, pickleball, you said there was a four-month period. When did that four-month period end, and, and what are they doing, what's happening now?
It's ended, hasn't it?
It's ended, right? So it's not like it's a...
It was November through March.
Yeah, and it doesn't make sense to me to, to just do a short-term. The goodwill of everyone is much more important, and working together. Okay, so...
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, my motion is, um, create an ad hoc committee with staff support that will, that will be used to, I'm not putting a time limit on it, but hopefully it'll be quick, because the motivation is going to be there.
Why don't you put a time limit on it?
Uh, create, uh, that will, will, okay. Well, that, that will, within six months, explore an alternative temporary solu, three months? Three months, over the summer, three months?
Yeah.
Over the summer, that will, will, over the summer, explore an alternative temporary solution for pickleball court placement in the Ojai area, as well as a permanent solution for pickleball court placement in the Ojai area. And that would include exploring the use of alternative courts in the summer, so the summer will be hopefully taken care of. And then have the ad hoc committee be comprised of representatives of two members of the local pickleball community, two members of the local tennis community, and two local residents, ideally who live near Libby Park Tennis Court Number Six. I think it's good to limit it to two, you know, so that, just, okay? And, and how those two are, are selected could be left up to the different, uh, people involved, right? Okay?
And, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I could include the third, the third part, I think we're in agreement of that. Place preservation of Libby Park's historic value and the physical integrity of the Libby Park tennis courts at the forefront of all usage and decisions. And that way, we've abided by three of the recommendations of the Park and Rec's Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say we, I, I, it's not time yet for us to use a Libby Bowl Court for pickleball. It's getting there. You guys are going to figure it out, figure out some options, maybe put some money together, and then we'll have this conversation again when it's the right time. But let's not disrupt one of the greatest things we have in this community, um, with all these people who just aren't sure about it at this point. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, we have a vote?
Okay, well, I won't be supporting the motion, because I don't think large committees, ad hoc committees, to spin around on something that could be more directly approached, but that's okay, Bob. If there's no further...
I could amend my, I could amend my motion.
No, let's vote.
Have a vote. I, I'm just declaring so I don't, I won't editorial, editorialize afterwards, I just don't think it requires a committee to solve it, but that's okay.
Okay.
If the council wants, okay, uh, well, roll, roll, let's...
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Councilmember Wirick?
Deciding vote again, yes.
Okay, we got a committee.
There we go. The other vote's still counted.
Just want to add, the committee will, will definitely look at the court here. You know, that'll be part of it, so, good.
Yeah, there are a lot of possibilities. Okay, so, if you'd like to clear the room, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, where are we? We gotta go through, that's good thing.
Five more minutes of Libby light, Libby tennis court lights staying on.
Okay, we have long days now.
That's it, we're into council.
We're done.
Councilmember, city manager, future agenda items.
Okay.
Is what it is.
Yeah, okay.
You know what, I tried.
Okay, you did.
You know, polls rushed in.
Okay.
Sure job.
Does anybody have a report, under council member reports? I don't hear any.
Okay, let's, let me, oh, I want, I want, I just want to say that our bike to school and work week, with the help of Captain Firehops and officers, is a huge success. Seventy-five bikes, as opposed...
More dangerous than you know, because I almost get run over on the bicycle thing with two guys that are cruising down on these stealth bicycles.
I saw it the fir, I saw it the first day, and I saw a lot of kids falling down. Um, I didn't quite see fifty kids that you had stated earlier. I did see about maybe twenty in your perception, in your procession. I don't know where they came from, but I do, I, I did recognize that, and I do thank the police officers that did join them, um, but I didn't see any parents.
There were parents, and they were...
Not in the first, not in the first day, in the first group.
Yes, but I was there.
We're not auditing the facts in the report. Don't give your reports.
What I'm trying to say is, I watched them with that group. There were no parents.
Okay, as soon as you have the floor, you finish up, please.
Okay, first of all, the bike train was in three parts. There were like different segments, okay? And, but the, I have photographs of the bicycles in the, in the bike rail, and I counted seventy-five bikes today, more than yesterday. But some of the kids are coming in, they're feeding, or they're, or they're just doing their own thing. But there were absolutely seventy-five bikes, plus a big wheel, plus scooters, plus many kids walking, because Topa Topa School is very accessible by bike, you know, more accessible than other schools, and they did a fantastic job promoting it. The only hitch was that we ran out of T-shirts, and all the parents were glaring at me.
It was a booming success, exactly, thank you. Okay, is there any other reports?
Yes, my other report is that I, I have never given, really given, uh, Ventura County Animal Services Commission report, and so at some future date, I'm going to have them... Oh, that's the future agendas, okay. All right, I know you want to get rid of me.
It'd be great.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll see, the rest is future agenda, okay.
Ryan, you want to report on the thing with Casitas, or should we save that for another night?
All right, well, there wasn't a lot to, I mean, we did sit down with Casitas, there wasn't a lot we discussed, I...
Well, they, they, well, what I got out of it was that, the question of the construction on Highway one fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's being coordinated, and it's supposed to start right after the first of the year. Appears that it there, at least they told us they were paying attention, that if they don't do it in time, it becomes much more costly, and the money they're using might be the, well, might be, or will be the...
CFD money.
The CFD. So, okay, uh, we got city managers' report, do you have anything, James?
Just briefly, we have our first budget workshop of the year scheduled, uh, this Thursday at five PM, so just as a reminder and information to the public. And then, um, just as a notice, uh, the Ventura County Twenty Forty General Plan Community Open House for the Ojai Valley is in Oakview on the twenty-second, from six to eight PM, uh, for people interested in attending that.
I have a question, city manager. Um, I am concerned that, um, uh, city staff isn't clearly communicating to Caltrans, that this council has deliberated multiple times, and determined a priority to address the pedestrian safety issue along Ojai Avenue and the thirty-three. Uh, I would certainly like an update on the beacon, the flashing beacon installations. Uh, I'm getting, you know, we've already had another pedestrian fatality, and I'm also concerned, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that we are doing everything we can with the grant funds that have been made available, to proceed with these pedestrian safety improvements as quickly as possible, and that includes the decision this council's made to endorse the traffic calming measures along the thirty-three. You know, we have...
Okay, we can report that back, and actually on the next agenda, we're expecting to bring, um, an update on the A T P project contract award, so we can include all that at that time.
I have a, well, I have a point that's worth bringing up there. It's just that we, you know, when we, I think it was in the last council meeting, and I know we've had some transitional things going on, but I think we gave guidance to the staff that we wanted to figure out the, the crossing situation in front of the hospital where the fatality occurred immediately, and I think that there may be other ways to access that, but I think we had kind of had a.
Yeah.
I think we had said we want to.
Go that direction.
We, we do not want to wait any longer. I think there's a consensus that there's a real danger there, so.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, as, in, in part of what Bill is saying, uh, let's, let's get that back in front of us as fast as we can, and if it means moving on a separate schedule than the A T P, then I think we should at least consider it.
I thought that, I thought that was the report from Public Works, that that, those crosswalks were separate and would be done ahead of time that they.
That's why they started them.
Yeah, right, I think that the, the thing that's another year away or whatever is that whole idea of the, of the dieting or whatever they say, narrowing the roads.
I think the inherent danger is with that rise and the evening sun.
Yeah.
The two lanes going each way, that is the inherent danger.
But we're not gonna be able to, nobody's accelerating that, are they?
Well, I, I, I just, uh, I want to, you know, I, I thought, you know, I just think that is the inherent danger. I, I was dismayed to hear that we did get a grant for demonstration, which would, would create traffic calming because you would be modeling, uh, the, the, you know, the, the constraints into one lane each way, and that we were still talking about a year away from modeling?
Well, they aren't even gonna make the improvements for, the, the changes for another year and a half, two years, is it?
But, but we would get some traffic calming by testing things out, much more quickly.
Okay, but I don't think that was what that particular grant was for, maybe.
I thought that's exactly what that grant was for.
No, I thought it was to show that the congestion and the, and how the, the traffic would, uh, function if, if the permanent improvements were put in.
Yeah, by, by put, by, by creating a one-way.
It's a demonstration.
That's what I'm.
You're both saying the same thing.
The demonstration would accomplish the same end.
So, what I'd like to.
And why is, I don't understand why you're talking still about a year away to do that.
While we're talking about this, if, Ryan, unless you wanted to speak up.
No, no, I was just saying.
I just want to attach another comment to this. First of all, um, I, I don't think it's fair to disperse, um, Mr. Weinstein, whether you agree with him or disagree. I don't think that that's what we need to do to us to.
I didn't name him.
He didn't name him.
Sure you did.
No, I didn't.
He didn't.
He did not.
He did not name him.
So, the next thing we want to look at is he has provided us information, um, directly from Caltrans, and the question I have is, um, they're talking about a safety report and they're talking about an evacuation report. I understand that we've done the safety. Um, I wanted to ask James if you can validate through the Caltrans director, um, what type of, of an evacuation report he's looking for, and then I think you need to come back to council and ask us if that's exactly what we need.
My understanding is that Mr. Weinstein's representation of Caltrans is not, position is not accurate.
Okay, but the guys, this is on the agenda.
That's a fair amount of discussion, something not on the agenda.
Yeah, right. All we were asking for at this point was to let the city manager give us a report. We somehow have.
And convey our official position that this is a dangerous situation we want to address quickly.
Was that part of his report?
No, I mean, that's, this council has decided, we want.
I know, but he, we were asking our city manager for a report, then we can come to you and to all of us, and we can continue this.
Well, I want the, I want the urgency and the official position.
Right, but not by interrupting the, the, please finish and then we'll come back. Bill, you'll get your chance.
I have nothing else.
Okay, good, now's your chance, okay.
No, I, I just, I just think we, we've come to an official position, a decision, and I think both the urgency and the fact that that is the city's position needs to be clearly communicated, you know, to Caltrans, and to the extent that that affects the priority.
So it sounds like we need an update because we got two different requests, both of which is to be information as to where we are and what we can expect, is that?
Because as far, as far as I'm concerned, the evacuation study's been done.
Well, okay, that's a seven.
Well, we had it in our, in our packet a few meetings ago.
Yes, yes, it's, it's true.
James on the, James on the, on the plan for the crosswalk in front of the hospital, is that in the works? I thought that was something that was coming back to us to approve. I thought, we were saying we were kicking the can down the road a little bit to get it done, but is that something that is already in the works?
I thought they had two of them out there that were already were approved.
They are, they are done.
Maybe I misheard, so I'm just trying.
Yeah, they have started things, but it still does not address the fundamental safety danger of two lanes in each way.
We know that's gonna take a little while, but we, we want to speed it up. The second part, we might be able to do expeditiously in a different schedule.
So, so when the A T P comes back, we'll have a discussion on that, because I think there's one other thing regarding safety that we could ask for from Caltrans, and that's putting a stop sign at church. If, if we had a stop sign in conjunction with crosswalks that were lit, we'd, we'd have another opportunity to calm traffic in that area without necessarily reducing lanes, but.
Okay, well, but, but Bill is saying he wants us to emphasize the urgency, and what you're saying is, is that we need the information back. That's great, and guys, if you've dealt with Caltrans, you know, that's state property, and we can keep crowding them, but maybe we should be talking to our assembly person and our state senator if we want to get Caltrans to, you know, to put.
And then, Mayor, I just wanted to interject something. Um, you had passed all of us up on, uh, council member reports. Um, you went to Susan, and then all of a sudden we went to.
I asked if there were any others, maybe you didn't finish that.
No, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. Okay, if you'd like to make one. So just real quick, yeah, first of all, we did have the water summit, and it was an incredible opportunity for this community to be at the forefront of gathering information, seeing all of the, the positive effects of water conservation out there, and I just think it was just an incredible win for this community. Um, the second thing is I, um, sat in for Ryan at VCOG.
Thank you.
Um, the other day, and we had an interesting discussion on G five, and, um, the eternity, the attorney that represented us in the, uh, initial, um, cell tower debate where we actually, yeah, came and.
Five G?
Yeah, so he.
Okay, yeah.
So he, um, so he was discussing it, it was just real interesting. The biggest question he gets asked is safety of these microwaves. He said there is no need to worry about safety regarding the five G waves because they're so small, um, the frequency is so light. So it was just interesting to have that fact put out there. Um, and then the biggest thing he stresses is that we're all in control of the aesthetics, which we already knew. In fact, that's the only thing that we can control.
Who's he representing now?
Um, everybody still. So, um, and then the last thing.
Couple of countries you don't agree with.
And then the last thing, um, you, you guys all missed a great opportunity. V C T C was here at Soul Park on, on, uh, Thursday.
I tried to get there, I just.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, it was an, it was an incredible day just to have the opportunity to understand just what they do. So here's a quick thought that, that left my mind from that. Forty-seven percent of the people in Ojai stay in Ojai, and they're commuting on a daily basis, forty-seven. Fifty-three percent leave Ojai, and where they go is Santa Barbara, Camarillo, and Ventura. Those are the three major cities that they travel to when they leave Ojai. So that tells you that there's a lot of traffic going out, Carpentaria, Santa Barbara, there's a lot of traffic going out, thirty-three to Ventura to Camarillo. But I thought that was interesting. Then the other thing is, they talked about the age of sixteen to twenty-five, and that age group is just coming into their own now regarding driving, and that there's gonna be a significant increase in the amount of traffic and congestion that we see in this community, not just Ojai, but in the, uh, try, in the ten counties, or in the ten cities in our county. So I thought that was important, sure.
And I'll just throw another fact out there that I shared with you, that after a billion dollars was spent on adding lanes to the four oh five in Sepulveda Pass, the average transit times have increased.
And one other thing.
I've gotten no measurable benefit at all in terms of reduced transit times after a billion dollars of adding a lane to the four oh five.
And, and then one other thought, Bill had asked me about, which I'm glad you reminded me of that, Bill, you, uh, Bill asked, what other traffic study is being done regarding just widening the one oh one? And there is a traffic study, Bill, that's gonna be taking traffic off the one oh one and getting it up to the five, either via the one twenty-six or another route, but they are actually studying that right now.
Yeah, we were talking about that because of, if we're just widening the one oh one to get port traffic out.
Right.
That.
Where's it going?
Where's it going?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are.
I haven't had my turn.
You, talk told us a whole lot about bicycles, what they do.
No, 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 I have.
What are you talking about? You haven't had your turn.
I haven't had my turn, we.
You started it.
Future agenda items.
Oh, we hadn't gotten to that.
Okay, well, I'm.
That wasn't a future agenda item, that was Randy giving us a report on the transportation.
I thought you were getting ready to.
I, I will give one quick report, it'll take two seconds. Randy, Randy had to go to VCOG because I was at HPC. The only news out of there is HPC did get the historic preservation report for the Ojai Playhouse.
Wonderful.
Say that again.
Could that be distributed?
Now, now you want to listen.
Could that be distributed?
The, yeah, it was, it was not public consumption as of, when I got it, so I don't know for sure.
I thought if it was.
Well, the, at the end of the meeting, they handed it out, and Suzanne told me it wasn't for public consumption.
How could that be if it's given to a public commission?
I, it, it was handed out the end of the meeting, I followed.
I think it's a public document now, we'll get copies to the council.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get copies of the council.
Okay, we are now at future agenda items, and I would like to suggest that we, you know, do this a little more formally, so, because this was put on here when I, I don't think it was on before I was mayor, I think Bill and I, uh, thought that it would be better for us to do it together, uh, but it's not working really well because we still get extra stuff shoved in during the week, which makes it very tough on the staff. So do we have some items that we want to, that we all agree need to come back rather than doing it in ones and twos? What, is there something that needs to be, uh, agendized other than we've all, the stuff that's coming in?
How do you determine who is the featured speaker? Because I have some suggestions for that. Is that also under future agenda items, or when do I bring that up?
Well, if you've got one, that you, I guess, we try to do it mainly for nonprofit, community-based things and not for advertising.
Okay.
Uh, and if you let us know, we try to do one and, and spread it out.
Yeah, yeah, well, Greg Grant, um, and some of his staff met with Patty Pagelin and a woman from Poison Free Malibu. They had like a one-hour presentation that I unfortunately missed, but, um, they would like to do like a, a ten-minute, you know, at the beginning of the meeting.
On what topic?
Uh, on the topic of, uh, Ojai, she calls it Ojai Earth Friendly Management, and on the topic of, um, um, not using poisons, you know, because the same top, the same, she wants to consolidate the same information that she discussed with Grant, with Greg Grant and staff. Um, okay, it's, it's here, the, the, it's the woman from Poison Free Mal, you know, to remind the public not to use rat, rat poison and rodenticides. Our local stores are still selling Roundup, so I think this is a very important opportunity for public education. You know, Ace Hardware has big.
Okay, but our presentations generally have not been to, for specific causes, I don't know how the council.
It's not a cause, it's an education.
But it, but it's a, you know, it would be like doing a special presentation on the smoking or whatever, as opposed to having it as a regular agenda item to talk about. Do we want?
Okay, either way, either way is fine.
Well, if we have a rule or, or a resolution or something we want to amend or to introduce, as opposed to using, the, the presentations are mostly ceremonial, and they can be educational, but they should be educational, Ojai-specific. This is a pretty broad one, I don't know what does the council think.
I'd suggest is if they want to come in for their three minutes of public comment, they're welcome, but that's not usually what we'd usually do.
Well, they, they have a, um, I think a slideshow, I mean, okay, maybe I'll get a description of what exactly they want to do. She gave me this and I haven't had a chance to, but I think it's, it's time for that because it's being discussed at the, at the county level, the state level, and, um.
I just want to make it, at least my understanding of this, guys, is the presentation thing is more, uh, there is no action to be taken, and we have pictures taken, it's like the museum or something that's local. If you want to do something specifically that is going to educate and maybe advance a particular.
Okay.
Public policy, then we could, uh, agendize it at some point, and then it would be.
Okay, let me discuss, let me discuss with them. I was just thinking, uh, because sometimes we do have education, you know, there's been exceptions like the Creek Road presentation. That was, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
That was a stretch, too.
Yeah, that was a policy thing, you're right, that had.
But it was a stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, are we going to put this, you, you, the staff is going to research the, the speed bumps, does that need to go on the agenda? And, or, I mean, I know you already provided us with information, but I feel like that was just the beginning, and, and address the situation on Drown? Are you gonna?
Yeah, we can come back with an item to discuss placing, I think what I heard was temporary speed bumps on Drown as a, as kind of a test.
Yeah.
So we can come back.
Do we have equipment that monitors both traffic and speed and also photos just to see, uh, you know, I live at the bottom of the hill, everybody, including our enforcement officers, velocity, what they call it? Velocitation off the hill, you know, so I just recognize, I take my life in my hands every time I come out of the driveway, but I pay attention, but, you know, where they what, what, three pedestrian fatalities, one in Ventura and two in Oxnard in the past week? Uh, and if you look, the National Transportation Safety Council.
It's the fastest rise.
Yeah, yeah, and then what's your news about.
Steep increase in pedestrian fatalities.
With their own with cell phones. Is there something that we can do to check that as opposed to other, other streets, or have we already done that?
It's on the list, Greg is handling it, I talked to him about it, um, about being able to not only capture the number of vehicles that are going there, but actually what percentage of enforcement would actually curtail the problem, how many people are, are violating the speed laws, not just an eighty-fifth percentile study like a traffic survey, but this is more detailed of how many people are actually going, the speeds that were identified, and whether or not it's something that enforcement will easily curtail, and then you can all make a decision of whether or not you want to use some device instead.
In, in the same, in the same, uh, area, we have some speed, um, solar speed signs on Kenyatta?
Yeah. You know, the one that, that tells the radar, just checks your speed as you go.[1565.12]
in the past week, and if you look, the National Transportation Safety Council...
It's the fastest rise.
Yeah, yeah, and then what's your news about...
Steep increase in pedestrian fatalities.
Drivers coming to their own with cell phones. Is there something that we can do to check that as opposed to other, other streets, or have we already done that?
It's on the list, Greg is handling it. I talked to him about it, about being able to not only capture the number of vehicles that are going there, but actually what percentage of enforcement would actually curtail the problem, how many people are violating the speed laws, not just an eighty-fifth percentile study, like a traffic survey, but this is more detailed of how many people are actually going, the speeds that were identified, and whether or not it's something that enforcement will easily curtail, and then you can all make a decision of whether or not you want to use some device instead.
In the, in the same, in the same area, we have some speed, solar speed signs on Kenyatta?
Yeah, you know, the one that, that shows the radar, just checks your speed as you go.
So, we have, we have two, we have two trailers, one that has a message...
These are trailers, I think there are two.
There's a permanent, okay, I, I don't know who put that up there, but...
Hence, hence my suggestion to liberalize consent item E, to allow cops' money to be used for this kind of thing.
And, and we do, and then this year, we bought a new LiDAR, so now we have, and we refurbished and got calibrated the other two, so we actually have three LiDARs, which is the same thing as radar, except it's using a laser, which is more specific at the individual vehicle. I've got officers who are now coming out of the Patrol Orientation School that are trained, and I have three others who have volunteered to go to the training. It's an eight-hour class for them to get certified in, so we'll have more people here in the valley that will be able to use those tools to help curtail the speed violations that we're seeing. Once again, it, it comes down to basic speed law versus prima facie laws, right? Anything under fifty-five miles an hour, we have to show that it's a hazard, and that could be done by, like Mr. Vidal said, there's no sidewalks, there's cars on the street, it's a narrow road. All those things add to the sight distance that, that allows us to have a more narrow window of enforcement as far as the speed goes. The wider the road, the more sidewalks they have, the less, the, the greater speed they can travel out, where we have to be able to prove to a judge that it was an unsafe speed, not just what's on the posted sign.
And, and also to understand that those are probably twelve-foot swells, if not ten-foot swells on each side of Drown. So, it's not the fact that it's dirt or deed or gravel that's level, it's the fact that it's a, it's a concave area that, again, I think we need to address in, in the street overlay this year, but it's pretty bad.
And I've talked to Mr. Vidal several times, as, as he noted, in almost two years. I've parked on his driveway before. He's given our officers permission to park in his driveway to run the LiDAR there, because he's near the, the north end, so cars have acquired a substantial amount of speed before they get to Pleasant, where they start to slow down again, so I can, I can feel for what his issues are. I told him that in the interim before he, thing gets put on the street, we'll do our best to enforce it. Like I've always said, education and enforcement are the things that I would always try and do first, but it is a cut through for people to get to Topa Topa Elementary, so the mornings and afternoons are a problem, and we'll do our best to enforce it.
He said you, we had a meeting there at my house last night with this group, and he said you were supposed to be there, so I'm surprised he didn't say he was very disappointed.
No, he, he invited me, I was not able to make it, but he did invite me to go, and I would have liked to have gone, but I couldn't make it, but...
Well, we, apparently, there's a lot behind this, so what's, what is the item for the agenda? Is there one that...
Well, it's going to be, how, how, Mayor, if we come back with safety concerns on Drown, and streets like it in the community...
And options to, and options to do.
We asked, what would be involved, does, do we have to be involved in authorizing installation of those speed bumps from whatever funding source?
The guidance happened during the agenda.
Can that just be done by the traffic, Mr. Grant? Does that have to, council interaction to do this?
I think it may require some, some direction from the governing bodies.
Requires direction from council, then that's why we would have it on there.
Right, so, so it should come back, Mayor, as a, as a discussion action item, so that we can direct staff.
Okay, so is, is, we don't have a specific time for it, we got to get the information? Okay, everybody, the city manager has it as a note. When it's ready, it'll come back. Okay. Anything else? If not...
I'm exhausted.
All right, well, I have a couple more things. Just, real quick, they're, they're important. I was, I was talking to the mayor of the city of Ventura, and they have, you know, they have a, a bigger homeless issue, problem than we have, and she was sharing with me one of the things that they do, which I thought was pretty incredible.
She? She, Ventura's?
It's a man. It's a man.
It's a he.
The he.
Who's been talking to you?
Yeah, he's running for supervisor, that's how I know.
City of Ventura?
When she's passed, she chairs...
Past mayor.
Well, she's passed, she chairs...
Mrs. Cheryl Heidman?
Locals, yeah, Cheryl.
Yeah, she's passed.
She's not the mayor, but she, she's been mayor before.
She's been mayor.
Yeah, okay, former mayor.
Former, sorry. So, but she was talking to me about it, and you know what they do is, they, they reach, they're, you know, a, a branch of their government reaches out to the homeless, and what they do is, they have a thing where they try to connect the homeless with their families. And then what the city of Ventura does, they'll buy the ticket, you know, pay the plane fare, and prior to that, they'll coordinate, make sure that whatever family member they have found, that they reach out and make sure that if we make the effort to send your son, daughter, husband, whatever, to you, that you'll be able to take care of them.
Is it?
And I thought that that was, you know, when I heard that, and they've done close to two hundred people already.
Okay, but where are we on, we...
So, what I wanted to do, real quick, is just share that, that, how can we, that gen, Mayor, we're all tired, but...
I know, but we're, we're not following any structure, and I'm going to have to start being a little less loosey-goosey here.
All I'm trying to say is, I'd like to figure out how to agendize this as a discussion